Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, commissioners.
I'll put his tie on just for the occasion.
That's right.
Better today? Paul, are you feeling better today?
Uh, not really. I was hoping to, but maybe after this meeting.
Doesn't usually work that way in the.
Mary. Flipman involved him, right?
Steven.
Yes.
I just got the email from Stu Markun Cornell. Did you have a chance to look at that?
I didn't see it before I came up, no.
Okay.
I just followed it.
Oh, you did, okay.
So can we keep? John, can we keep Paul right there like that? Unless we have to do something?
No. No, because then you won't see whoever else is speaking.
They'll switch back and forth.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, when we're not having anybody else, can we? This is.
They're just, they'll stay down at the bottom, and I think whoever is speaking will pop up right there.
As long as everybody mutes.
Yeah, that's why I muted Miller. So. I agree with you, but I don't want to mute Paul.
Well, yeah, and I'd like to keep all up front, so I'm not.
You need a fancier system.
Yeah.
Change my views at all. If I do, I'm going to take it away from you. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's not on the agenda.
People coming out at the bottom, but I guess this is how.
In September? Yeah. Down in Augusta? Is that the one? Yeah, I think I did get it. I just looked at it real quick yesterday. It's that phone HS.
Yeah, whether you, because it mentions sending sheriff or chief deputy administrator. So, and then I just saw.
When you looked at it, you.
I don't know why Mike's staying there instead.
I just saw the sign as if Mike starts.
Yeah.
I did see it. That's sealed. No.
Hello?
Give somebody something.
Is that mom?
Well, Tim Rich sent me a text this morning.
Well, I guess, I don't know, well, they didn't have a room in Bangor or what the deal was.
They took what the bridge. Like, no, 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 no.
Bang on the table.
To the doctor.
Yeah. Right.
So it was a regular appointment?
No.
Sunday.
They called.
He was still here two years ago.
Yep. And that's what, he went down there, that's what he was told they were gonna do, but apparently must be something that they can't change.
Hi, Paul. How's it going? Paul, can you speak to us?
Can you sit down?
I don't.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear everybody. I heard.
We were just running a test. Thank you.
I mean, I just, the last second, I said, maybe Julie.
All right, with us. I'm good, Leo.
Yeah.
What do I know, your loss. What do you want?
I don't need it. If I need it, I'll let you know.
Paul. Yeah.
Are you going to make motions this morning, or?
Yeah, I'm prepared to do that.
Because.
Cornell, can you go move your car, please? They're gonna start that tree work.
I parked in the.
I, yeah, there was no cone where he was.
You need to. You need your work done on your cabs.
I think it's better safe than sorry.
You need your body work done on your cabs.
Patrice.
Yeah.
Purchase glasses. I need to get my pair of glasses. Mine are all scratched.
Oh, this is Paul.
Last time I got them, I got them in Alberta.
He isn't doing.
Yeah, we're just, we're all ready to start a meeting, but we're all set for.
He doesn't do the glasses that qualify under.
Right. What we've been doing is printing out a form.
You'll be a couple people later on.
You take that form to your eye doctor. He's there for a minute.
Right, now give it the description. But I just need to know where to go to get the glasses.
You can go to wherever you go to. If you used to go to Alberta and go to someone different, just take the form with you. And have them give you a receipt, fill out the form, and then you can send it to the insurance company and they'll credit you back. I'm not sure how much, but I don't think it's a full amount, but you can't go outside of the network.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Very well, yep.
Okay, yes. I keep getting muted for some reason.
Sorry. Because you were on the phone.
Operating, don't worry about it.
We won't meet you again.
Okay, that's all right. I didn't know if that was on my end. You can mute me all you want.
Good. Is it increased by 25 more? Two, wait a minute, increase by 25 more or two 25?
25 more. Make sure I have 25 dollars more on top of already forty dollars plus the five. But I want you guys to know.
Oh, I am. I'm very much a favor. You, if you tell us what you want us to do.
I'm just making you aware that that option is here.
Okay. You need to tell us what you would like to do. I don't know. I think for the first time in years, we've got a chance to make a simple process to pay for itself, which is, it's always been a requirement, but not with me.
Yeah.
But at least now we can get a lot closer if we don't charge the fees.
Well, at forty dollars, it's gonna make a huge difference, looking at the numbers other than COVID. We're averaging twenty two to twenty three hundred papers, that's forty plus the others.
What was the deficit to you?
Oh, God, last year, I don't, I don't get that number. And remember, we increased that by one hundred and fifteen thousand projected revenue, one hundred and thirty five, hoping that that price increase would go up in April, May, and it never did. We just ran.
Duncan, let's get parts. Duncan, let's get parts. If that's all it would do.
It just hits delete.
Now I'm nervous. You really didn't see my email yesterday?
I feel like I must.
Because it affects, it affects today. You can tell Billy, did you get my email?
For what?
I'm straight, oh, my, please.
Yes. Julie. Julie, I got your email and my motion is reflective of your email.
Oh, about the fee?
Yeah, about the.
The day, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just was like.
Yeah. Twenty eighth to twenty seventh, yeah.
No, twenty seventh to the twenty.
Yes.
I think I sent it to you.
Oh, oh, we saw that. Oh, yeah, you talked, okay, because my, I was telling Paul and, and, I mean, I'm telling him, my, Microsoft changed my browser from Chrome to Edge, and so I can't, that's affected my passwords, and I can't get my password on my account. Anything changed without the administrator, so I'm gonna get Chuck.
Yeah.
So there's, I hadn't had anything on my calendar, so if it didn't come on top dog, I didn't get it.
Yeah, no, I did.
Yeah, and I saw that.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And Julie, you heard that I got it?
Yes, I did, Paul. You are coming in loud and clear.
Okay, good. I thought you guys got muted me again.
We're timed now. All right, I'm gonna call to order the Hancock County Commissioner's Special Meeting for August twenty third, twenty twenty two, or twenty, August twenty third, yeah, twenty twenty two, to order.
I'm gonna move to approve the agenda as presented, with the exception of correcting the grant number and item three A from three twenty three zero zero six zero five eight, twenty twenty two, two, three, twenty three zero zero six zero five seven, two zero two two. It's just, it's just a great number, and item three A on the agenda was, was printed as zero five eight and should be zero five seven.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right, do we have any public comment this morning? All right, hearing none.
I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of the August second regular meeting as presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right.
Do we have?
Yeah.
Let's, he's not on the meeting yet, so let's move on to item number four, the UT.
We're skipping over the airport?
Yeah, because he's not here. He's not here, Paul.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, so we'll skip it, we'll come back, we'll come back when he comes.
Okay. So Miller, do you want to give some background, or you already have, in my opinion?
Well, in two thousand twenty, we signed a one-year agreement with Milford for fire and EMS, and they, at that time, they only wanted to do one year to give it a trial. And it worked, so in twenty twenty one, we signed a three-year agreement. Between that time and the spring, Milford got a four-wheel-drive ambulance. Now they want to repeal the existing fire and EMS contract.
And expand it.
And approve a new contract for fire, EMS, and ambulance transport service.
Okay, so we'll do it in two steps, I guess. I'm gonna move to repeal the existing agreement for fire suppression and emergency response for T thirty two M D, T thirty four M D, T thirty five M D, T thirty nine M D, T forty M D in the south half of T forty one M D, with the town of Milford as recommended by the UT supervisor.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Now, with regards to ambulance, Miller, we, we had that covered by.
Right now, right now it's covered by Northern Light, but I don't, I didn't dare to do anything with Northern Light until this got approved. If this is approved, now I'll move, move forward with Northern Light to renegotiate that contract and take out these townships.
Are they required, if we wanted to repeal that and replace it, are they required to let us out of that contract?
I think in the contract, there's a ninety-day notice clause about letting us out of it, but we don't want to get out of it completely, because there's still other townships that we want them to continue to cover.
Just wondering if they were adamant that they want, they don't want to lose any of the coverage.
I doubt it.
But I would ask, I would ask Miller, make sure that that gets updated with the Emergency Services Communications Bureau, so it's reflected on that on one, somebody calls you.
Well, that's a discussion you need to have with Miller, I guess, because of what you just said.
I will tend to it.
Thanks.
Okay, so are we ready to?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the fire suppression, emergency response, and transport service for T thirty two M D, T thirty four M D, T thirty five M D, T thirty nine M D, T forty M D, in the south half of T forty one M D with the town of Milford as recommended by the UT supervisor.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right, Miller, talk to us a little bit here about the animal control.
Okay, in your packet, there is the Washington County Agreement. Let me give you a little background on this. We, we had an animal control officer that was covering for the UT, and I believe eleven towns, and she is retiring, getting done. And now the group of towns have been working together, trying to come up with a solution. And Washington County has an agreement for a regional animal control officer, and in your packet is a copy of that agreement. Penobscot County also has a regional animal control officer, and I will get a copy of, of their agreement. Today's meeting is more or less to ask the county commissioners, if you would be willing to act as the host or the, the hiring agent of an animal control officer, similar to what Washington and Penobscot Counties have done.
My personal feeling is that I would support that. We got a letter from Stu, you, you just forwarded, you know, from Lemoine a little bit ago, in support of it. So, but with that said, it all depends what the agreement says. If it's similar to, to, you know, and it's what it says, and, and, you know, how it pencils out, of course, but if it's similar to the one that you've, you've given here, and, and similar to what Stu has outlined, if the, if the agreement pencils out, and when I mean pencils out, you, I think you know what I mean financially, then I think it's, I would very easily support it. I think it would make a lot of sense.
Miller, does there is administrative fee for the bookkeeping, record-keeping?
I don't know the answer to that. We haven't really got into any finances as far as how this would work, but this is more an exercise to see if the county was willing to do it before we, before we spent a lot of time on legwork. If you weren't interested at all, we'd have to take some kind of a different route, but if you're interested, we'll get numbers and come back to another meeting.
Yeah.
I think in principle, you have support, some support, again, echo of Paul said, I mean, really depends on how it gets worked out, because I don't want the county to be flipping any of the bill on this, so.
And what, what, one of the things we had talked about was possibly some kind of a, just a, like we do with our fire contracts, some kind of an annual site bump from each town, and then hourly and mileage rates built to each town for service rendered.
So there is gonna be, there could be a considerable record-keeping component involved in this, isn't there?
Yes. I guess, I think there's gonna be. Each town right now does it a little bit different. As far as the UT, I have always screened the calls. Animal control calls come to me, and I try to weed out the ones that need an animal control officer to come deal with it, and the ones that don't. Other towns, all calls go directly to the animal control. Obviously, if the county did this, all animal control officers, officer calls would go directly to ICC, and then be, they would send the animal control officer to whatever town had called in, and somebody's got to keep track, the animal control officer then would keep track of the hours and mileage, so that the proper town could be built. Okay, yes, there's gonna be some bookkeeping involved on the county end.
Right, somebody's got to coordinate the information that the ICC is collecting. Is that you, or is that the treasurer's office? What do you think? I mean, it can't be you, can it?
Well, I don't know. You know, I, I'm willing to do it, but I'm not sure. The UT, the UT is kind of a one-horse sleigh, and I'm not sure I can be everywhere as it wants to deal with it. I almost think it needs to go through the Hancock County Office rather than the UT Office.
And we're paying you by the hour, aren't we?
Yes.
So, the rate, well, anyways. Well, I'll tell you, my personal feeling is, this is exactly what the county should be doing for the municipalities in Hancock County. We should be finding a way to coordinate services, and, and so I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I'm just trying to figure out what the impact's going to be, and especially on Monica. She's just finally got some help in her office. Now we're starting to load her up with, you know, all these extra duties, so I guess we really need to hear the details of this a lot closer.
Well, well, my feeling is that that's all, you know, the next steps, and I have a motion prepared, the next steps would be for Miller to work with our administrator on, you know, what gets allocated to this, what gets paid for, what gets in the agreement, you know, all that kind of thing. I think it's a model that could work, and it might even be a model that could be expanded to towns that have their own now, but, you know, are struggling with it. So I, I think it certainly is worthy of, of taking the next step. Are there some things that are gonna have to get allocated to this? Absolutely. It's, it's not something we're gonna solve overnight, but we gotta get started. So I'm gonna move to authorize the UT supervisor to study the need for regional animal control program and report back to the commissioners. And, and my guess is that he's gonna have to work with the administrator on, you know, what this entails, and when you need us to weigh in, he'll do it.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. I think too that this could open up the door to other regional services, like assessing code enforcement, other, anyways, Scott wants to speak.
This issue of animal control, I think there are guidelines, so you can, so I think the person may, depending on what their authority is, may need to have at least pre-service certification, if you can. We can research that, if you can.
There is an ACL program, there is. And that's not, that's not pre-service. That's something besides.
Well, it's part of the, it's also on the pre-service.
Dave from the animal control officer has met with this regional group, two meetings so far, and he's been giving us some guidance, and I guess the group is looking at this, that we've got to be very careful as far as who we hire for the first ACO, because the ACO is the boots on the ground in the field, and they can make this work or make it fail awful easy.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's put on your shoulders, I guess, Miller, to develop a good program and then, you know, recruit a good, good candidate, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Miller.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, do we have Leroy?
Leroy?
Yeah, I, I finally got on. It wouldn't let me in earlier, so. So.
I'm ready for A if.
The agenda, did it have the correct, yeah, did you, did you have the correct number there, though? The agenda I got says. Okay.
I corrected it, so I'm gonna move to approve the FAA grant offer for Phase Two drainage repair, three twenty three zero zero six zero five seven, dash two zero two two, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Second to motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, so I do have a question on that. Is we, we already approved the signing of the grant offer. Do we really need to prove this, the signing of the grant also? I'm just looking for future reference, that's all.
Which one we talking about?
Fifty seven, the one we just did.
I don't understand the question.
Uh, did I lose you? Did I lose you? I'll shut the video off, see if I can get any better.
No, no, you're fine. I just don't understand the question.
Um, well, for, for future reference, I'm wondering, do we need to have an approval to sign the grant application? Because we've already had, I'm sorry, we had approval to sign the grant application. Do we need an approval to sign the grant?
Well, I would say no, but the FAA paperwork asks us to get, you know, to have a, a motion to sign, and it's, I thought it was pretty specific, so for, my answer would be no, but I think it's probably yes, because of what the FAA paperwork said.
So what, what happened, Leroy, is that before we got the grant, we approved signing the grant, and now that you've got the grant, you're asking us to sign it? Is that, is that?
No, what happened is he asked us to sign the grant application.
Yeah.
And then this is a grant offer. So, so we're signing that, so Leroy's question is, did we really need to do this since we took action before, and my answer is, I don't feel that we do, but
I know.
It's pretty specific, so I think that we do.
I, I think we should, and I think as a matter of course, on all applications versus the grant, that we should have that ability for a second thought about whether or not we really in fact want to go through with it, so I think this is the final, giving us a second chance to reaffirm that we want this grant, so I think it should.
All right, well, and that's what the paperwork says.
Right, okay, that, that's all. I just wanted to clear it up. That was all, because we was getting close on time.
All right, next, next spot.
Um, so, okay, so we can move on to the next one. It looks like Morris Yachts is gonna sell to eight, S H M Hinckley LLC, and they just want to cha, transfer their lease over to, to that organization.
Or assign, yes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to approve the request of Morris Yacht LLC to assign its lease at twenty seven Ramp Road, Trenton, May, oh, four, six, oh, nine. to assign its lease at twenty-seven Ramp Road, Trenton, May oh four six oh nine, SHM Hinckley LLC. Upon execution of the purchase agreement by SHM Hinckley LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and authorize the chair to sign the assignment document.
And just for clarification, this zip code was oh four six oh five, no, oh nine, but I'll suck at the motion.
I haven't written off, I, I'm sorry about that, it's ingrained in me. It is in fact oh four six oh five.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the, the last one is the Columbia Air request for a fuel tank addition and lease amendment. We, we have, this one's just for really discussion. Columbia is on there if you want to hear anything about this. We've got a meeting with John Hammer tomorrow to, to go over the agreement with him to make sure it's okay. So maybe a little premature on this one.
Can you get it? You know, it all depends on what the lease amendment looks like. But I, I can, everything that was outlined so far, I'm in support of. I'm in support of them expanding their fuel holding capability, you know, given what's transpired as of late. And I think it, I see no reason not to support it, but it all depends if there's anything new in, in the agreement.
Right, I, I would agree that it should be supported, but I, I have some things that I would like to clear up in the agreement. I'd like to go over them with John first.
So right now, you're kind of still hammering out a little bit.
Yeah.
And figure out some of the location and setbacks and stuff?
Um, we, we've done all of that. And again, you know, the Columbia folks are on there if you want to hear from them. But we hammered out all of that, we had an airport advisory committee meeting, that went well. They requested for me to go to the town to find out what the setback from the road was on our future SRE building. So I did that seventy-five feet for anybody who cares. And we, the Columbia folks decided that they would cut their lease hold back enough to give us the fifty feet, just over fifty feet between their lease hold and the future SRE building. So I think most of that is pretty well hammered out. There was just a couple of things in the lease that had been overlooked for a few years. And I think might be the, the time to, to, to correct them.
Sounds like housekeeping stuff, not standing.
Yeah, yeah, you know, the, the basic, the basics is yes, you know, we've proved, you know, I, I agree with it. We just got a couple of things to make.
Great. I think with the advisory committee in, in support of this, I can support it too. But I think it's ironic that we're talking about increasing capacity at a time when we can't get fuel.
Agreed.
Well, one may help out the other. And I just want to give the, yield to the Columbia folks if they wanted to pipe in, I didn't mean to hide.
Thank you very much, good morning and thanks for entertaining our, our issue. This is Nick Burlingham for Columbia Services. Yes, the, the project is basically designed to double the storage capacity of the airport's jet fuel offerings. And, you know, given the supply chain issues and driver duty schedule timeouts and, and issues that we've been having with the terminals. We think that we can bunker, you know, twice the amount of jet fuel. And thereby sort of, you know, withstand these supply chain issues with greater dispatch reliability for the airport. And that's really it. And I have on the meeting Guy Ruel from DuBois and King, who's our aviation engineer, who's designing the, the system. And also Jason Homiak, who is the airport's on-call engineer for any questions.
Is, is there any, this is strictly a jet A issue, not an avgas issue?
It is at this point. We currently have ten thousand gallons of avgas storage capability plus whatever we can carry in our trucks. You know, ninety percent of the fuel that we sell at the airport is jet fuel. We only have twenty thousand gallons of that right now. So this is going to double the, the storage capacity and, and our, and, you know, ensure dispatch reliability.
Does an increase in a, in a tank like this, what kind of EPA setbacks or how does that get involved in this, the whole approval?
Guy, I think that's, that's a question for you.
Yeah, happy to answer that. Yeah, again, thank you for, for having us here today. From an EPA perspective, you know, what, what we're looking predominantly is there, there's really no change, inherent change. The EPA protection that the airport has right now is, is really on the offloading ability. When the fuel truck comes, the vendor itself and leaves and drops the fuel. And that's not going to change with the fuel capacity. The, the tank that will be installed will be a double walled contained system. So from an EPA perspective, there, there's really none.
Is that underground?
No, it's above ground.
Above ground.
All right.
Is, is there, I know one of the issues sometimes is availability of avgas just because of not quantity, but you know, just because of personnel, you don't have enough people. Sometimes, you know, they're in high demand. Is there talk of a self-fuel as part of this, or is that just a totally different project?
Well, at this point, we're not looking at a self-fuel situation there. However, it is feasible. And what we're asking the commission for is an expansion of our, our, our fuel farm footprint that's sufficient to in the future add a second ten thousand gallon avgas tank. And, you know, these things are, are pretty expensive. You put the farm in in two thousand eleven or twelve, at the time it cost over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're anticipating with, you know, the price of steel and everything, that, that our current project is at least three hundred and fifty thousand. So we're going to take this one, one bite at a time. Could, and in connection with this, I should also say that we, we, we are asking the commission also for a ten-year increase in the term of our lease, so that we can amortize the cost of the investment.
No, great, thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your attention.
You have anything else for us, Leroy?
Uh, no, that's it. I guess I need to see if I can get Chuck to work on my internet a little bit.
You're fine, thank you. Too much. All right, wait a minute, excuse me. Are we, are we taking any action with regards to their request or we just, is this information?
We just taped, we just took the information, because like I said, I, I got, we got a meeting with, Cornell and I got a meeting with John Hammer tomorrow to go over some of the, the agreement and some of the tweaking. I'd like to see done to it.
Yeah, it, it sounds like they, they've got some housekeeping chores to do with the lease and, or the agreement, and then it's going to come back to us, is that fair?
That, that's fair to say, I would suspect it'll be back on the next meeting.
Well, Leroy, on renewal of leases, is there a process we go through to determine who is going to get the next lease? In other words, is it like competitive bidding? Or what's, what's that process been in the past?
Well, this is an amendment.
Well, nevertheless, if, if we're increasing their existing lease by ten years, are we, are we subverting the, the process that we've always had in place that gives other people the opportunity to, to, to get that lease? I just wonder, I don't know, I, I'm asking because I don't know what the process has always been.
Um, well, I, I haven't, in all my years, I haven't seen a process of renewing a lease, because most of the leases have an option on them to, to add time. So this lease originally had, I believe, a ten-year option. They exercised that. And then I believe we added to it, and I'm putting on both hats at this point. We added to it when we put the fuel farm in another ten. So that they ended up with, with, with at least thirty-plus years on the lease. Now they're looking for another ten. Far as vendors, we've never had a vendor come up to the end of the lease that I can recall.
Yeah, this, this looks like it would be amendment six. We've had five amendments so far.
Yeah. Some of the amendments were just clerical amendments and small changes, so.
Yeah, no, this, to me, this is, this is reasonable. They're looking to make a substantial investment here that, you know, going to benefit the county as well as themselves. And I, to me, this is, should be dealt with just as an amendment.
All right, thank you, Leroy.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Chuck, I think you're up.
Chair of office completed a background check, so that's what that. Requesting to hire Brandon Jarvis.
Okay, I'm going to move to hire Brandon Jarvis of Green Bush for the cybersecurity spillman administrator position at an annual salary of sixty-three thousand, an exempt position and funding from the ARPA funds account.
Well, it's the exempt, Paul, I'm curious about, does he qualify as an exempt employee?
There is a provision in Labor Standards Act about computer positions. And they list three tasks that they do. He does part of all three of them.
He does part of all three. Great, that's, that's, that answers my question, I'm, I'm fine. I'm going to suck at the motion as presented.
Any other discussion?
When's he standing, Chuck?
It'll be Monday next week.
Monday next week?
And when are we going to, when do you think, start doing the spill training?
Actually, September thirteenth, I believe, is his first day training.
On-site or is that away somewhere?
In, in New York.
In New York?
All right, any other discussion? Paul, you got anything?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Chuck, I need to see you over. People, my password from the county. Microsoft changed it to edge and they won't recognize my password.
Okay.
Two requests.
I'll track. Good morning. I'm requesting to hire Reverend Von Hainkow of Denham as a full-time clerk at P grade six C effective August twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
So this gets you all filled up now, right?
Yes, this, this gets me even keel right now.
Hopefully we don't get an email a week from now. That seems to be the mode of supper on die lately.
I know, I know.
Not from your, just your department.
I know, everywhere, I.
Our chair has one day with full capacity.
And, and this will be, I mean, you approved this last year and today I will be full. This position has been open for almost nine months.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Don't tell us that, well, you don't need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm waiting to hear from you, Julie.
I am.
Thank you. Morning. Thank you, thank you for that.
Just a quick, couple of quick things. Request to hire Jennifer Felker of Old Town as full-time corrections officer of full benefits effective August twenty-seventh. It's that I A.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I just, I, Tim, you broke up on me, it was August twenty-seventh, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Permission to work corrections officer Christine Newman of classifications. Officer Newman will be acting shift leader for her current shift.
So moved.
Second, so she's a SEAL working as a.
She's a corporal that's going to be taking on the sergeant.
Why is that re-classification, is that part of the job description? That corporals act in the absence of the sergeant?
We've done that in past practice, we've, in history, we've done that, give them the boost. Is there, is there a sole pressing of?
Oh, if we, if we just let them work, they get corporal pay, does she get sergeants pay with this?
She'll get the, she'll get the, the three percent.
Yeah, okay. So when we do this, how long?
It studies every new thirty days, it says thirty working days.
And that's in the agreement?
Correct.
Yeah, part of the agreement, I, I read that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And just one thing, the body scan will be on-site Monday. And they just all have some time.
So how do we go when they came to do the site?
Good, I think it's good, I'm going to have to do a little modification, get it down, we have to span a little bit of it, but there's, we don't issue. We'll put it where we want it.
So I'd like, I'd like to see them, that's fully operational.
Yeah, hopefully by, in that meeting, we should have a fully operational.
Yeah, I'll try to remember to leave my contraband home.
Great to see a little government session of it.
That's right, that's all.
Thank you. All right. Chair.
We can schedule a meeting, Julie just mentioned she'd like to see it too, so we could schedule something with the commissioners and and Cornell and everybody can come see what it is, what it's all about.
But when, excuse, when's Mike coming, Cornell?
September first.
September one.
September one? So Michael will be here by that time, you're going to install.
Yep.
Yes.
Great, first one I have is discussion of possible school resource officer of the Denham School. I have James Stilton, the superintendent for the district, and Jeff Paul, the principal for the Denham School. I don't have any hand facts, numbers to talk with you about today. I just wanted to make a presentation, you're aware of the request. I attended a meeting at their request about a month ago. And they expressed an interest in the school resource officer. I gave them the information that I had from two thousand and eighteen. And those numbers certainly are dated. But I didn't put any numbers together for this because I wanted to make sure that I didn't waste my time putting all those numbers together again. And the commissioners not approve it or the commissioners say, let's look at it a little further or look at some options. So I guess I would defer to them if they have something that they'd like to say to begin with and then I can answer some questions for you. But the, the Reader's Digest version that I was led to believe in the meeting was that they would like to have a resource officer on-site five days a week for the entire school year as soon as possible.
So, excuse, what, so we're talking about finances, so before we talk to them, what about the summer? I mean, are you going to pick up the extra costs?
Well, that's one of the things that I want to talk to them. I told them the same thing that I told the group before, based on the decision that the commissioners at that time said, that they would have to fund that position for fifty-two weeks. Now, if the commissioners say, yes, that is what we want to do, yes, we'll go forward with this project and yes, we want them to pay for the entire thing. Then that, those are the numbers that are put together. But if the commissioners say, well, I'll have the benefit of that officer for two weeks, uh, excuse me, two months, maybe ten weeks in the summer and want to put it in the budget, the county budget, then we can look at that too. So that's what I really want to do, is have that discussion today. Let them give you the idea of what they are looking for and why they want that. And I can share you some of the numbers that I quoted in two thousand and eighteen, just to give you a ballpark figure.
Well, I want to tell you right now, that I sat here in two thousand and eighteen, I was discouraged that the schools are willing to pay a hundred percent of this and the commission did not approve this. As far as I'm concerned, this is like a town contract. If they come to you and say, we'd like to hire a deputy and pay for that, who are we to say to that town, you don't need it? And it's the same thing I'm, I'm saying right now, is that who are we to say to school administrative people that they don't need the resource officers? So, and I understand how much busier the sheriff is in the summertime than, than he is in, in the off-season. And I wouldn't be opposed to a portion of this ten weeks being added to his budget and giving him the ability to use this officer in the summertime. So I'm going to tell you, that's my position from, right from the get-go. And of course, I developed this a little bit over talking to the sheriff, so it's just, this isn't brand new to me. But that, at this point, that is my position.
Well, I'd like to pipe in here, because I, I wholeheartedly support this. I think even if we had a school administrator that was, that was adamant that he didn't want it, I would argue with him saying that it's needed. I've seen what it, what it does in Bar Harbor. My daughter went through the school system with a school resource officer. I think it, I think it did. I've seen what it, what it does in Bar Harbor. My daughter went through the school system with a school resource officer. I think it, I think it did tremendous, it helped with officer-student respect both ways. I think it's, nothing, I can't say anything but positives about it. I would say that whatever, you know, for me to, to support a specific agreement, I'd have to see it in writing. But, you know, with that said, here's some things that I think it needs. I, I think it needs to be a flexible document. There needs some, you know, if the sheriff needs somebody, he should be able to, to, you know, reach out and grab this person when needed. I think that, you know, the funding thing i- is, is, is gonna be tough because, you know, you don't wanna be keeping track of, you know, to the minute of where an officer is. They just, you know, the sheriff needs the flexibility. If he needs somebody to be able to pull him from there, there's, there's issues of a vehicle. There's all those things that need to be worked out. But I think with, with parties that wanna make this happen, that's actually probably easy stuff. And there's a lot of models out there. Chief Willis in Bar Harbor, I had a quick conversation with him, was, you know, tremendous, threw out some things to me that made, made a lot of sense. I think he would probably benefit the sheriff and the school administration. You know, if they haven't already reached out to him, my guess is you probably have. But I, I'm in support of this. I, I would do whatever it can, whatever I could to, to make it happen, because I think it's a positive. And, but, you know, it has to work out equitably for all parties, and, and I think that's a given. I'd like to hear from the administrators and.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm James Stone. I'm the superintendent for AOS forty-seven. We had this discussion, as Sheriff Kane referenced, at our last school committee meeting in July. The, it was a unanimous vote, five oh. Everybody on the board is very vested in having a resource officer. If we can work out those details between all of us, as you say, I think the logistics of it, those are things that I would consider to be the details, but those are things that don't want to block whatever it is we need to do to make this happen. We're firmly committed to wanting not only the resource officer there daily in our community, but a lot of the value we see there is the relationship that this person can build with our children as we go forward, the connections with the staff, and working towards just getting that program off the ground. We've spoken with Sheriff Kane about building it from the ground up to customize whatever it is we need to do to make this successful, with the understanding that as we go forward, our knowledge of what will work and what won't work, work will grow and will continue to evolve as we move forward, because that's the nature of these programs, particularly when you're starting from scratch. We are committing, or we are willing to commit to a multiple-year contract, because this isn't gonna be a one-and-done, and then we pull the plug. We really wanna see this be successful for us over the long term and ultimately become a permanent part of our school in Dedham. I would gladly answer any questions, but that's really our view. It's not just the safety piece. I think the biggest value we see here is relationships that we can build between our community, our staff, and our students with this person as we move forward.
And, and I would contend that that relationship i- is, is vital. It benefits students, teachers, the departments. I think it's how you build mutual respect, and I, I've seen it work very, very, very well.
Completely agree, completely agree. So we, we are vested in this. I don't know what you need from us further, but we are. And Jeff Paul is here as the building principal too, if you have other questions.
To, to me, the next step is, you know, to work with the sheriff and our administrator when, when it's appropriate, you, you know, on, on an agreement, put something on paper, you know, we gotta go back and forth. There, there's a lot of resources out there, Bar Harbor, you know, Chief Willis, I think, is a, is a tremendous resource. I, 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 I'd love, I'd love to see it move forward. And, and to me, that's how we do it.
Thank you.
I'm not in opposition to it. I'm kinda hoping that it's gonna get funded by the town and not by the county. So I'm kinda hoping that that's how this end up, ends up getting ironed out. I mean, on my personal note, I'm probably not a huge advocate for it, but it's not my point, just like Bill brought up, the, the town and the school district supports it and want it. It's not my position to get in the way of it happening. I do wanna, kinda curious, the, it, it came up at the school board meeting, right, and, and got voted on unanimously, but not a lot of folks go to school board meetings. And so I just wanna make sure that you have support amongst the community, not just by the school board, and how public that is, because us approving it, and then the next thing, I start getting seventy-five emails about how this shouldn't be happening is what I'm kinda worried about, is what's gonna happen. So I wanna make sure that there's been some kind of a truly public notice of what the plan is, especially since, I mean, it's gonna be on the town's bill here, in my opinion, to pay for this. And it needs to get, in my opinion, it needs to be a pretty public discussion. So I just wanna make sure that that happens on your end.
So I can, I can tell you that the select board reached out to me directly around this issue. Well, before we had the meeting, it's also what I've received, multiple emails and phone calls over with concern about not having one. I can't tell you that that speaks for the whole town. Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to, to mislead you here. Certainly, we communicate back and forth, and I can make sure that they're aware, but we did give, we did give public notice and do the whole proper protocol and procedure to make sure that people were aware there were multiple staff members that were at that meeting as well. But I can make sure that more, there's more of a notice that goes out, but just, just so you know, that is what has happened so far to date.
All right, thank you. And, and, and my feeling is this, that the school board and the select board in Dedham are, are, are the elected officials for that town. This is, we're not trying to shove this down Dedham's throat. I think this is something that Dedham has come to us, and we're, we're facilitating and supporting. If, if Dedham was here in opposition to this, I wouldn't be so, I wouldn't lend the support that I am, but I've seen the positives. I, I, I really think that it's, if Dedham wants to do this, I, I'll work hard to, to, to make it happen. I mean, it all boils down to the agreement. It's gotta pencil out. It's gotta make sense. There's gotta be flexibility for the sheriff and the school department. It's gotta be, you know, a document that works. So, you know, my enthusiasm may be tempered by, depending on what the agreement says, but the concept I, I support and, and i- if I'll do whatever I can to, if Dedham is in full support of this, to support it.
Well, John and I may end up agreeing to disagree on this, because I, I still feel that, that vacation in the summertime and whatnot is a time when you, you could use this, and, and, and we should perhaps contribute something towards his annual salary. But having said that, Scott, I, I need for you to remember something that, as you're crafting this, is to try to get some agreement that the, this office's benefit time will be taken during the school recess, the school vacation periods, and not during the summer. Because if he continues to work during the vacations in the school period, and he takes a month off in the summertime that we're paying him, then we end up paying for the, the school's vacation time. So you understand the issue?
Right. And, and the other piece is just saying, you know, I'll be able to take advantage of that person on snow day. The days when we have more accidents, there's another, there's another deputy that's available, those things. And the resource officer is gonna be available to meet with staff. They're gonna be available to meet with parents, the community, and gonna be involved in, in many, many things. And you just can't go pick one person, say, you're gonna do this. You've got to hire somebody that wants to do it. You've gotta have somebody that has the communication skills, and you've gotta have somebody that has, that enjoys working with young people, and those, those are tough to find, so.
And I think, I think the, the school and the communities need to understand too, this, this issue of perhaps it's a school day, but the officer's tied up in court, we'll say, for a couple of days on, on a trial, that occurred during the summertime. You know what I mean? And they need to understand that those idiosyncrasies of that, and, and, you know.
I think support and some guidance as to how I craft the, the funding, whether we are, or the county's gonna say, yes, we'll pick up the eight weeks in the summer, or no, we want the town to, to pay the whole bill or something. I'll need to have that guidance before I start putting numbers together, then I can sit down with the superintendent, the principal, and start working on that. But I want the, the officer that's selected is gonna be trained in there, because we've had a strong there program in Dedham for many, many years, and they're gonna be, have to attend two, two weeks of SRO school. There's the basic SRO, and there's the advanced SRO. Both of those are a week. And we, we can address those things in the agreement.
Well, Paul, are you prepared today to give Scott some guidance as to whether or not you'd support some level of, of contribution towards this, because the officer's gonna be available during the summer?
Well, the answer to that is yes, but until there's something in writing, it's tough to do. But just here's some, here's some issues that I see. Gonna need a car. Okay, and, you know, i- it's gonna be impossible to assign all costs to the appropriate entity. But i- i- you know, if we're providing a car, maybe that officer's available to, you know, I don't know all the issues, but there's gotta be some give and take. And, you know, to me, that's what's important here. I'm not, I'm not willing to say, we'll, we'll pick up the cost during those ten weeks when the school's not picking up any, or the, you know, the ent, the other entity is not picking up any costs associated with the car. That's just a for instance. I, I'm not picking on those specific things, but the, only that agreement, only that in writing is gonna, you know, is where I'm gonna need to make that decision, because I just gotta see that there's give and take, that it's a good deal for both parties, and I think it can be. I think it worked out that way in Bar Harbor. Only, only Chief Willis could answer that, you know, and probably Cornell would be a, a huge asset here. But I, there's gotta be some give and take, some flexibility. That's what I'm looking for. I can't specifically say, we'll pick up those ten weeks, you know, without knowing the other stuff. And, and I don't think that anybody in the room there can, can do that, because we don't know all the issues until we put them on a piece of paper.
Well, I, I only think that this is fair to Scott, that he has some sense that there is some, some consideration by the, the commission that will consider some portion of the cost of this, however he incorporates that into the agreement. So I think, that's why I asked the question.
All right. Sheriff, is there other examples of sheriff departments being the source of the resource officer, or?
When Oscar County had a conversation with Sheriff Morton, he's looking for five. The town of Herman wants three. They have three school buildings, and they don't want just one SRO. They want one in each building. And Orange, and if, if you correctly, Mr. Stoughton, that's in their district, is also requesting a school resource officer. So the demand around the state has, has grown again in light of unfortunate incident that happened in Texas. And I just think it's a, I think it's a great opportunity. I'm spoiled. I'm, I'm biased, because I've worked in the school for many, many years, so I do know the benefit of cultivating those relationships. I currently have three people that are employed here at the sheriff's office that, that work for me, that I had as their students years ago. So I do know the benefit of an officer being there and breaking down some of those barriers. And, you know, that, that uniform is a barrier. That uniform is a badge many, many times. And to be able to work with young people and help to break some of those things down is valuable.
But careful what you ask for when it comes time to find these people.
I know, I know. I, I have somebody on staff now that meets most of those qualifications, and I had a what-if conversation with him. And he said, you know, depending on all the, all, all the issues, or all the little fine points, some of them we were talking about here now, could be interested.
But careful, Scott, because my, my instinct to that statement is that I'd be reluctant to approve a resource officer. It means we're gonna drain the existing, the exact force that we can't replace. So we have to replace somebody before we, you know, okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, but, you know, here's another scenario. You know, there's, there's a, something, y- y- you know, something transpires, not at the school, but close to the school, and the sheriff needs to draw the school resource officer to help with that. You know, these agreements, that has some worth to the, to the, to the sheriff's department. That has some worth to Hancock County. You know, so all those kind, all those scenarios need to be, you know, sort of touched on in an agreement. That's why I think it's gonna be impossible to get this, y- y- you know, so tight that everybody gets, there's gotta be some give and take. That's all. That's all I'm trying to say. And you, you know, please reach out to other folks to see sample agreements, you know. I think, I see support from the town of Dedham, from school administrator, the, you know, from the county. Nothing but good can happen from this if we, you know, all work together on getting the agreement. Put it in writing. Let's see it, and let's get going.
The, the last agreement, or the last proposal that I put together several years ago has an MOU, and I got several MOUs from, from other law enforcement agencies that currently, at that time, had SROs. Waldo County had one in Mountview High School down there. And I, and I did attend, several years ago, I attended a, a big meeting down at Mount Desert Island High School that was hosted by the superintendent. Chief Willis was there, and I was invited down. And there were parents, and there were administrators, there were staff, and there were students that were there. And I, it made me feel good to see how many students stood up and said, we want this person in the school. We trust this person. We feel safe with this person in the school. Now, that's a high school setting, agreed. But, you know, I, I kinda went into it with my head a little bit, going, boy, you know, maybe we're gonna take a beating on this one, into a person. Everybody stood up and said that, yes, this is a good plan, and we don't want it, we don't want it to go away.
Let's make that happen.
Cornell, what we can say, yeah, a question for the superintendent. Will your twenty-twenty-three budget's been adopted? Is there funding available for the SRO?
I'm sorry, did you ask if we had the funding for it this year? Is that what it was? I couldn't quite hear.
Yeah, where your budgets are been adopted.
Yep, yes, we believe we do. We have, we, 'cause we have a, we have an undesignated fund that we can tap into if some of the other grants don't work out that we are considering pursuing. But yes, we can.
I think I have my guidance. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending.
Absolutely. Thank you for hearing us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Sheriff.
Discussion about the county fee for civil service. I think I sent you some information with the prices that we increased for our civil service.
I, I, I didn't wanna, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Sheriff. I, I was gonna actually take a little action to codify this. You know what we just talked about? I was just gonna move to approve the request of Dedham Schools for sheriff to develop a school resource officer program and report back to the commissioners. That way, you know, you have guidance. You know, if the rest of the commission doesn't feel that taking action is prudent, but I, I, I like to lend support by taking action.
And I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. And Sheriff, I, I apologize for interrupting you.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Getting back to the civil fees, I sent to you when those prices increase that we went to, and going through the statute, it was brought to my attention by Harry McKenney, who's the guru for, of civil in the state of Maine.
Still?
Still. I gotta tell you.
How long's that been, been there?
Well, probably as long as Leo's been selling.
Yeah, I guess so.
So, but anyway, on, on the section nine thirty-eight, M R S A four twenty-one, it says the county commissioners of each county may require, may require that the fees collected under subsections one, two, three, five, seven, twelve, and fourteen be increased to twenty-five dollars.
I, twenty-five.
Just making you aware of that. And, and I think the reason that's there, Paul, is because many of the counties do business different than we do. Our civil process service employee Our civil process service is an employee of the county, so all the funds, the mileage, the fees, all go back to the county. Many of the counties have contractors, so they would hire you, Paul, to do one part of the county. So I think what this does is so that the county uh would would uh get some benefit of it financially and not all go to the people that are serving the papers. But I I don't want to, you know, certainly this is not my decision. This is the commissioners. And if I'm directed that you want to do that, fine, but the the fees went from sixteen dollars to forty dollars. Um so which is a a big increase. Unfortunately, it took so long for it to get to that point. It wasn't addressed for many, many years where it should have gone up incrementally. It took this big jump. To add another twenty-five dollars, you're talking sixty-five dollars on top to start with, and then your mileage and your other administration fees on top of that. So you easily could get to a hundred dollars. And I'm just concerned that some people uh are not going to be able to pay that fee. I I would rather look at this and maybe another year, maybe work into it. I don't I I don't want to go crazy with it. But again, this is your decision. This statute is directed to commissioners and not to me.
So so I just wanted, this is to increase by twenty-five dollars, not to twenty-five dollars.
Twenty dollars is what the statute reads.
It's gonna be two twenty-five. If it was five, it's gonna go to twenty-five.
No, this is, this is to increase it by twenty-five. Uh we've already increased it to forty.
No, no, this is a
Separate fee.
Separate, this is the administrative fee. This is the fee that that you can charge to cover the cost of record keeping. And it was five dollars. It's gonna increase by twenty dollars to twenty-five if you if you wish to do that. So it's an increase of twenty dollars over the five dollars to to twenty-five.
Oh, I thought it was an increase.
This is in addition to the fee for the civil paper. And those fees change with depending on what the paper is, but there are two fees here in this section. One of them is the administrative fee, which is what was five dollars, but there's also the withholding and deductions for the deputy. Now, are we still collecting those, Scott?
Yes.
So we're collecting, we're charging additional to the fees already of five dollars under the old law and the withholding and deductions of the con- of the uh civil process deputy. So, and I don't know what to remember. Do you remember? It was, it was like ten percent, wasn't it?
You know, we, the general service just increased to forty dollars. A rush service in seven days is sixty-five dollars. Same ser- same day service is eighty-five dollars. Civil order of arrest is sixty dollars. Diligent search is forty dollars. Hourly rate is seventy-five dollars per hour. That's if we have to do research. Uh and mileage is increased to sixty-two cents a mile round trip.
So we're not charging withholding?
No, I'm sorry.
We are not charging them the withholding fee for the deputy on that paper?
No.
Okay.
Okay, great. So as far as I can tell, Sheriff, on what we're looking at is page two, section nine, the part that's highlighted there, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's crossed that, so that fee can be increased by twenty-five dollars. The only thing that we're dealing with in this in this law, right? With this action, with this suggested action.
To increase that to twenty-five dollars.
No, by, the the language it says be increased by twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, right. It's by, it it it's increased.
Increased above your initial fees of service mileage and stuff. That's that's what.
That's right.
I interpreted, okay.
I think I think this, you can use buy in too, synonymously here.
Yes.
Because
I agree.
The net effect is, is that are you charging the five dollars now?
Yes.
Right now, they're charging five dollars administrative fee. And they can charge up to twenty-five under the new law.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah, so.
It's an increase of twenty dollars if they want to go into full twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. In other words, we we, this law enables us to increase it by twenty-five dollars, where before we were only able to increase it by five dollars. So, yeah, so I support this. Uh I I I'm gonna throw the motion out. And then I understand the sheriff's concerns, but I I vividly remember the the conversation during the last budget cycle where you made a a a great case for I I know it's a big increase, but it's a big increase because of of what didn't happen in the prior, I don't know how many years, twenty years.
Longer than that, and quite frankly, the jump from sixty dollars to the forty dollars it is, taking into consideration the cost of living increases through that period of time. This forty-dollar fee is ninety-two cents higher than what it would have been if they'd increased it each year by the cost of living.
Yeah, so I I I remember that argument, remember it well. Uh so um.
What I'm just trying to avoid here is sticker shock. Going from sixteen to forty is a lot. We could do this maybe incrementally and look at it towards next year's budget. I'd just like at this point to hold the line and where the increases are, but certainly this says the county commissioners, and I don't happen to be one of them.
But I I think I I I'm for doing it now because, you know, that sets us up for the budget cycle. Uh you you know, I'm gonna move to increase the civil process fee by twenty-five dollars as allowed under title thirty-eight, section four twenty-one for subsections one, two, three, five, seven, twelve, and fourteen. And I agree with the sheriff, but I I I I want to do it now so that it's part of the budget cycle. It's, I mean, we're starting it now. Let's do it now. I mean, we gotta, it's gonna be sticker shock whenever we do it.
Effective what date?
Off the Band-Aid.
Effective what date would you?
Uh.
I I just thought about that, but let's just make it
I'm gonna notify the attorneys and the people, you know, send them a letter saying that this this increase.
So what would make sense? Like January first?
September first? This is the twenty-third. Is that too too long to wait? Or when do you want? I just want to be able, when those increases went in, I drafted a letter and we sent it out to the Hancock County Bar Association. We sent it upstairs. We posted it on our website. So I just want
I was just trying to, I was just trying to set it up for the budget cycle was only my, so I I'm fine with January first, but
Well, Paul, if you made January first part of your motion, I'll second that. But if I I'm, I want to see this fee increased, but I want to give some consideration to the sheriff's reluctance. So I guess, John, I'm I'm saying that I can agree to January first for this increase to twenty-five. If that's part of your motion.
Y- y- yes, uh and Sheriff, does that alleviate? I I mean, does that make sense? Or you can tell me if I'm out to lunch. I I I don't mind, but I I I think we gotta rip off the Band-Aid.
If your motion is to increase to twenty-five effective January first, twenty twenty-three, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, so I I it's the, I'll reread the whole thing. Effect, move to increase the civil penalty fees by twenty-five dollars as allowed under title thirty-eight, section four twenty-one for sections one, two, three, five, seven, twelve, and fourteen, effective January one, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, sorry.
Twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we'll make it happen. Thank you.
Did you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll give you some
Well, uh numbers, dollars and cents.
I know it, I know. And and here we are, talking sticker shock and and increase and everything and whatnot, but I've always said that this is a primary responsibility of the county to provide civil process service. And one of those could only be served by a deputy. And for that reason, whatever the cost of providing that service, we should be providing.
But on the same token, if we have an opportunity to collect a fee associated with that service, I think we should be doing that. And so I'm I'm really looking towards a discussion sometime in twenty-three of collecting deductions, withholding and deductions, which we can do and we're not doing presently. So just buy it where you want, okay? No, good.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you for that one. Uh I have, excuse me, three forfeited assets assets here. First one is approval of transfer of
Excuse me, have you been avoiding call sharing discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just want to bring bring you up to speed. Uh last Wednesday, Pat and I met with Lieutenant Charette and Lieutenant Johnston and had a discussion about call sharing. It was really a opportunity to get to know Lieutenant Johnston a little better. He is going to be the new uh lieutenant for this super district that they're gonna have from adequate for Penobscot, Hancock, and Washington County. Uh Lieutenant Charette is going to be the lieutenant for the interstate, so he's gonna be moving from Troop J. There will be no more Troop E in Penobscot County. There'll be no more Troop J down here. They're gonna have another name for it, whatever, whatever that's gonna be. Uh and they expressed to me that they were still going to abide by the call sharing agreement. But one of the things that I did note in that is when we first met with the Colonel and he shared this information with us, they were going to have a midnight trupo that was gonna be on midnights and work overnights. Well, I've already eliminated that. So my concerns uh are the same concerns that I always have. When am I gonna get the phone call that call sharing is not gonna happen? So that's basically uh what we discussed last week. Um and I'm kind of disappointed that they are gonna remove that person, uh that position. And they cite uh lack of manpower or lack of resources.
Scott, that never made any sense to me. If they were going to reduce their rural patrol work, why would they add a position like that? Because
Would you apply for that? If you were gonna be, I mean, you know how difficult it was when they had town contracts.
But I mean, I could see it if they said, we'd like to have our patrol and then to do that, we're going to increase our midnight. And they'd get all the calls and whatnot. But I don't understand why that fit their reduction in rural patrol at a time when they're gonna add a position like that, because it's not just one name.
No.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, anyways. So that never made any sense to me, and I'm not surprised that it didn't didn't make the final cut. So
So uh that's really all I had. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what the new look is going to be. Uh once they get squared away, that's gonna, that's gonna occur in January. Uh it was the last information that they shared with us. So.
Questions? Uh now we've got our forfeited assets.
Yes, first one is approval of forfeited assets, State of Maine versus Walker-Gaspur, in the amount of one thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Funds to be deposited into G one, three, uh excuse me, three one, uh G one dash three zero two one dash eight zero.
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
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 Second one is approval the transfer of forfeited assets, State of Maine versus Garrett Collins, in the amount of three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. That will go into drug task force account, G one dash three zero one three dash five zero.
So moved.
Second. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh and the last one is approval of forfeit, transfer of forfeited assets, State of Maine versus Joe Matt Kil- oh, Matt Leo Del Castillo, in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars to be deposited into drug task force, G one dash three zero one three dash five zero.
Who missed?
So moved.
I I have twenty-one hundred. I have hundred forty dollars?
Well, that's, our share is one thousand seven hundred and twelve.
Oh, I got you, one thousand, nevermind, just read. Is this the order or is this just the uh?
This is that the commissioners will approve it and then they'll have the transfer of the funds to come next.
Have we signed? The willingness on these, that's what these two are. So at some, at some point, we'll get the order on these later.
Correct. This, the first one was an order. And the second two uh your approval to accept the funds.
I don't think we thought it on the last one. Others in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh They're all approval of transfers, Scott. They're not, they're not orders. I I I maybe another question, I'm sort of looking at you, but uh Now, this is, this is, this isn't the order, Scott. These are simply, the court wants to know if you'd be willing to, if they did order, so, yeah.
You said it, this is required, or have you approved?
I don't even know. We got promotions on the
Paul made, Paul made the motion.
For which one?
The third one.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Others in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, yeah, okay. So at some point, you'll get an order for these.
Just like the first one, we had approval. Anything else, gentlemen? Oh, uh just a side note, Leo got in touch with me. Cruises potentially will be here in December. And they probably won't be, these will be twenty twenty-three, so whatever he has and whatever comes in in Massachusetts will be it for the year, so we need to consider that one in your budget.
How many is Leo coming up?
He's got four. He's got two that we supposed to have this year, and he ordered two more on the off chance that we take them. I said, I'll take all four.
So you still have money in the budget for two this year, correct?
I do. And then whatever we do next year, we talked about using the upper funds, I believe, in the next year. We've got six on hold down there because I didn't know if Leo was gonna get his. We potentially have, and we'll have another discussion on funding when
Exactly.
When you
Exactly, just a quick update.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My only uh thing is accept resignation of dispatcher Brandon Uggley for full-time effective uh Friday, August twenty-sixth. He'll become a full-time firefighter for the harbor. He has expressed interest in staying on his part-time work. Which will help us a little bit.
So I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of nine-one-one dispatcher Brandon uh Uggley effective August twenty-six, twenty twenty-two as a regular full-time employee, move to regular part-time employee as requested.
Second the motion.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, with the fireman's schedule, he should be available, perhaps quite often, shouldn't he?
Depending on what they've got, he's not sure of his schedule down there. It sounds like it'd be one on, couple off, one on, couple more off.
Yeah, so if he doesn't pick up anything else to do, he
Uh that would make him available for would be the rotation that we have would make him available for the the standard rotation schedule that we have, so.
It would not?
Not likely so, just because of the way it rotates.
No, 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 I didn't mean it's full-time, but I meant
Oh, no, it's part-time, yeah, yeah.
He should be available, give us somebody more available.
Yeah, that's his current plan, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
What's that? He's ESP this morning, Candy.
He's been just thirty seconds.
He wouldn't been here thirty seconds.
What are we for? I know, we started doing the hospital this morning. So we did an active shooter uh exercise, one and two this week. First was this morning, then uh Friday in Elzberg, being close.
I take it he's been there. And well done.
All right.
Commissioner, I apologize. I don't have to hand out to you, but I will email it.
It'd be great. Thank you.
As soon as I return. So it's just talking points, not a, not an official document.
Okay.
I got, I got two.
Oh, thank you. So commissioners, you may recall that um back last year, I shared a couple of memos with you regarding both the ENPG, the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program and the Homeland Security Grant Program. You speak about the mechanics of those um and how we make use of them here in Hancock County. Uh the short version is that uh what I had anticipated with respect to restructuring of those grant programs has now occurred. Um and what that means is that uh under the Emergency Management Performance Grant, at the top, which one hundred eleven thousand four hundred and six dollars is now been reduced uh by twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars to ninety thousand nine hundred and nineteen. Uh this is the grant that we use for our operating budget. So our process, when we formulate the budget, it goes before yourselves, the BEC, and so on, for our operating budget. Uh this is that part of the money.
Can I ask a question while you're on that number?
Yes.
That number is the one that's not in our control, right? That
That's correct.
Okay, so that that reduction is not because of a funding on our side. It's it's how it's coming Okay, so that, that reduction is not because of a funding on our side. It's, it's how it's coming from the state.
That's correct. Yes. This is, this is, this is the grant whereby we are reimbursed at 50%.
Okay. So, but we're reimbursed at 50%, but if we upped our budget, we would not be up, we would not. That's the max we can get.
Correct. The maximum we're going to receive is 90,919.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the net effect is, is you've got 20,000 less than projected revenue, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
That is correct. So that has consequences, not just for EMA, but a couple other departments. But then budget discussion, so I'm going to defer that now. However, under the Homeland Security Grant Program, you'll see that we have a gain. We're receiving 100,655. And that is now increased to 142,386. So that is a plus 41,7323. And to explain it simply, this is the funds that come to us that is reimbursed at 100%. So there's no local match.
Yeah, that's why I was asking the previous question. Thank you.
Yes. In addition, there's a new funding stream available to us, the Local Emergency Planning Committee. That's the one that is responsible for the Tier Two hazmat materials for all the facilities and businesses in Hancock County. And that has 9,764 dollars available to us as well at 100%. So.
So what's the, what's the 10,492?
That is training. So we get two pots of money from the LEPC.
Oh, I see. These are two separate amounts?
Right. So the $9,764 is what I can use for operations and that is to defer my expenses for conducting that work.
And the Homeland Security Grant, that 41,000, is that for operational tool?
Uh, it can be. It can be. So what I have tried, knowing that this reduction in ENPG was coming, I have transferred much of our operating, or as much of our operating budget elements to the HSGP program. So rather than being reversed, reimbursed, it's being paid for 100%. There are some restrictions. So for instance, the Homeland Security Grant Program has some mandated requirements. 25% of the total needs to be spent on any terrorism law enforcement expenditures. I need to address presently domestic violence extremism, election security, soft target hardening and things like that. So the federal government dictates to the state what it is we're going to be spending that money on. And then we have some leeway with respect to how we, how we invest accordingly here. The 10,942 hundred hazmat training, this is the money that pays for the hazmat training that takes place typically for the volunteer fire departments throughout Hancock County. But that includes the money that I spend to conduct that training on behalf of the Fire Academy each year. It's about 3500 to 4000 dollars. Additionally, I just got word yesterday that the Hazard Mitigation Grant that I had submitted back last November was awarded, has been approved. And that is 23,351 dollars. This is to help us pay for the cost planner, professional planner who updates our five-year mitigation plans. The money appears on the county's website and incorporates all the towns. And this is really the starting point for each of the municipalities in Hancock County that are interested in pursuing those mitigation projects using federal dollars, be it for climate or others, so, so treatment, for instance, Bar Harbor's water treatment. So where the federal funds are proceeding, this is where it starts. So it's an investment. The bottom line is 31,807 cents of a net gain in our funding. So even though there will be a consequence to our operating budget as, as we go through the process and see it, we are gaining 31,800. And I just want to try to verbally explain that in a simple way.
31 towards our operating expenses?
Towards the total federal dollars that are coming in.
But I'm still, I'm still wondering how I'm going to cover that 20,000 shortage in your operating budget. Is that going to be 20,000 shortage?
So we've reduced costs in the operating budget?
Do you, do you predict that you're going to cover that 20,000 for the?
Not the entirety. We're going to have about an $8,000 shortfall.
Yeah, he's going to. You're going to be shifting, as you stated earlier, you're going to be shifting some the, the, what's left at 8,000, I don't have those figures in front of me, but I'm just listening. That 8,000 dollars is what you can't accomplish via shifting, right?
No, it's correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I already have over the last several years, moved many things from the.
Yeah.
To the Homeland Security Funds.
Yeah. I remember that explanation during budget cycle. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
So I'm I was curious too, you know, you sent the email, I don't remember what it was, about the facility, about the possibility of the funds coming for the facility.
Correct. So to answer, so to answer your question specifically. I, I've been assessed rent, $8,000 rent that the county receives using the ENPG funds in the past. And also I've paid $4,000 for our IT support each year. So those are the two big savings. So they're coming out of my operating budget now. But that creates a shortfall, $8,000 for the facilities department. They showed his revenue and $4,000 for the IT.
Not sure. In other words, you're not going to pay your 8,000. That's how they'll.
We're not going to get reimbursed that money that we've been assessed for a way in the past. It's not what we're allowed.
Yeah, see, that was, yeah, that, those are, those are accounting losses, not. I, I'm following you.
I'm trying to be oblique, but at the same time.
Yeah, I, I'm following you. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to put it in words to, to explain it, but I can't. But I, I'm following you.
So. Correct. Yeah. So when we get to the budget sheet, I'll be able to, I, I think.
Yeah.
In a different form and format. So. Okay, so. No actionable item, but just for your information as you go into the budget cycle.
Yes, sir. Well, that Paul's question, approval of funds facilities. Are you prepared today to discuss that?
Uh, I, I can, but I know as much as you do at this point. So what I've shared is pretty much the extent of my knowledge. I don't, I don't know whether I'm really prepared to discuss that.
That's it. Okay.
You should probably defer, if you don't mind me suggesting. Um, when you said facilities, I'm sorry, I thought you meant facilities to be.
Yeah.
Not facility.
Connection to here. They were going to coffee or something. That's all right. That's good.
All right. The other item I have for you is, and I didn't hear the show's presentation, but I certainly cottons into the issues with respect to call sharing and all of that. However, I will say that Lieutenant Rod Charette, he and I both started really at the same time, about 11 years ago. And he's first, he got the job, literally his mother died and then later his father passed. So he had a bit of a rough start and it wasn't for quite a while until we actually met up and started to work with one another. Well, in spite of the politics that is taking place elsewhere, I will share, and I'm sure Commissioner Clark will will agree, he, he has really gone above and beyond with respect to what he has done on behalf of the citizens of Hancock County. And his responsibility has been Hancock and Washington County. I can only speak to his role here in Hancock County. But in, in the new role, he is mostly very quiet behind the scenes. He's always acting professionally and he's always going the extra, extra mile for us to make sure that the support we need, my agency need, got done. I'd like to acknowledge that as he leaves. I think you know he is headed to Troop I, newly formed troop that has responsibility for the interstate from Augusta to Holden. So that's where he's headed. And then Troop E, which I don't know if Sheriff King spoke to this or not, but it's going to include Penobscot, Biscataquist, Washington, Hancock County.
Are they going to continue to call it E?
They are. Well, they're going to continue to call it J as well, but on paper. So I'm a bit skeptical, but that's not my role, not my place to speak to. But my point is that I, I've enjoyed an excellent relationship with Lieutenant Charette and I'd like to acknowledge that. But didn't want to make that assumption or take that upon myself or anyone for you. That's something that you would be interested in doing instead of myself.
Well, I can tell you, having worked with Rod over the years and whatnot, he's a real gentleman. He's always been approachable, effective, well-liked. And I would like to personally be involved in, in recognizing him and thanking him for his service to Hancock County as, as Troop Lieutenant.
Well, thank you. That'd be great. Would you mind if I prepared something for your, for your consideration?
I think that would be great.
Yes, good. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have on the agenda today. Any questions? Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Shanky.
Thank you.
We would need you next.
All right. I should be the next to you.
Wash my hands. Discussion.
No, I thought each department had. Are we taking a break?
Yeah, we can take a.
All right. Everybody, I'm muted now.
I am.
All I have is you. You can hear me, Juliette? I can't hear you. I can just see you, but I can't.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, but I can't hear or see anybody else.
Oh, it's just me and you. The county of Hancock is muted.
Yeah.
I think they're watching us, though.
That's kind of scary.
I agree. I have to answer the phone. I'll be right back.
Very good.
All right, you can hear us now, right, Paul?
Okay, yeah. Juliette and I were having a great conversation.
We heard them were listening.
Sounds good. All right, Paul, so we're looking over the EMA budget right now.
Okay, I suspected that.
We didn't start. We hadn't started. Be right on cue.
So the 20,000 reduction is this 20,000 that they did to you in 2022, correct? Andy?
Sure. So 22 is, begins in October. So my great year 22 is actually in October. We're using three different calendar cycles then. The counties, the states, and then the federal.
That's the $20,000 we were just talking about.
That's correct. Yes, Commissioner. All other line items remain flat.
Yeah.
Change.
The change in the part-time. Can you explain that a little bit just so?
So your next agenda, I hope to appear before you and ask you if you could go forward with the hiring. Someone to fill that position. And just to give you a preview, the plan is to bundle it with another department or possibly two departments. That have need. So that would be the EMA contribution towards that.
So when we budgeted, okay. Yeah, I can, sorry.
Yeah, this budget is flat. There's nothing.
I always have a tendency to look at the wrong pal and look at the actuals and not be looking at the previous budget. I want to like look right over. Now I understand. And I can, and obviously in your expenditures is where we see the 8,000 from the facilities.
Facilities and then 4,000 under telephones.
This is my first time at this point. Is there action taken today or are you just reviewing?
Well, we don't generally. We'll take action in terms of making. Revisions to it, but we don't formalize usually the department budget till later. You got anything? All right. So if we're done there, I guess we're going to move on, probably.
That's good, Andy. Thank you. Great. Thank you. So I'm wondering, Council, how you think the best way to address the change in the PAC.
So our revenues are flat? For probably?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
We moved on here. Okay.
Juliette, our actuals for this year estimated 136. Do you agree with that?
I do.
You do?
Yes, I just, Bertie did not complete the revenue portion. And they just used the information from last year and plugged it in for this year.
So can we consider an increase in the projected revenue for billing fees, filing fees?
Yes.
What would you recommend for an increase over the 120?
I would recommend that it's actually more in line with the actuals. So.
135?
To 140, probably.
Bill, where are you getting that number?
Which number are you talking about?
On the revenue page.
I'm on revenues, Paul.
Yeah.
The filing fees, if you look under the 22 estimated actuals for the year. They're estimating that by December 31st, Juliette will have.
136. Okay, yeah.
Juliette's thinking that it could be closer to 140 in 2023. I think that's a little ambitious. I'd like to see 135. I'd rather see unprojected revenue than over-projected.
I can see that. I can make that adjustment.
Paul, can you agree to 135?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we know that 120 is low.
Yeah.
All right, so if we agree, we can change that to 135?
Yeah, although the five-year actual is at 121, but I agree, we should be on the higher end of that. 125 makes sense.
130.
Excuse me, 135 makes sense.
Okay, so let's make that 135.
Well, especially if it makes sense for Juliette.
She said she's comfortable with 140. I think that's more ambitious. Well, I'd rather have 5,000 anticipated revenue than 5,000 in the whole. Juliette, any any projected increase in your publication sets up over nearly 3,000.
We do. We continue to need to publicize. We're having to do more special publications for people that their whereabouts are unknown. So those costs are greater than the standard estate notice creditor publications.
But you're getting reimbursed for those, is that correct?
Yes. Typically, we do.
So can we increase that revenue to 22,500?
Okay.
No, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking if you think that's a wise decision.
Well, here's my, for actual, she's at 23,200. The five-year average is at 23, you know, 22,979. So to me, that could easily be 23 if Juliette agreed.
I think between 22,500 and 23,000, I feel comfortable. I'm still new to doing budgets, so if it's preferred to under, then we'd do 22,500.
Yeah, you've been getting it, so.
Yeah, that's my personal opinion. I'd rather see unprojected revenue than over-projected. So what are we talking about? What's the number here?
22,500.
That going once.
All the other numbers, to me, look fairly in line with, except the forms one, I.
I, I'm going to look into that a little bit closer. I don't think it's an error, but I want to double-check.
How could it possibly be that much of an increase over last year?
Because I'm adamant on charging people for forms that we've just been giving them away before.
And you could actually raise 25,000 from charging for forms?
Well, that's what I want to double-check.
I would hope you would triple-check that.
Yes.
Paul, I don't agree. First of all, abstracts, back up on abstracts and whatnot.
Yeah.
Per project, it is nearly 400 more than the budget. Do we want to increase that?
Well, what I was.
Five-year average is 2,500.
Yeah, I tend to look at the average too also, so.
If there's been fee changes, that could affect that five-year average.
Yeah.
There has been.
Juliette, fee increases?
Yes, just this year, there's been a fee increase in the abstract.
Okay, so when you think about fee increases, if you average out the fee increase over five years, it's not significant. But if you increase that for the next budget year, it becomes more significant. So that's why I'm saying that.
21, it was at 2670 is what it was.
Yeah, but there's been a fee increase from.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying so, I mean, to certain degree, you could do it to 2,700.
Yeah, I get it.
Abstracts, 2,700. Juliette, can you agree to that?
Um, yes.
Now, the mailing fees, though, are down, Juliette. In other words, we got 35 projected, but it looks like it's going to be less than 3,000 for your actuals. Is that, can you agree to that? Do you think that's going to be the case, though? Your half, your half year was less than 1,500, so.
And last year is at 28,650, 21.
I feel like that one is a more variable cost, to be honest with you. I'm not 100% sure how that's going to shake out. It really depends on the type of service that we have to perform. And let's see.
Well, these numbers don't, these numbers confuse your image because your five-year average is almost 35, but your year-end is only 3,000, so.
And this is another area where the price fluctuates. I think last year, the postage, what we charged was different than what we charged this year. Because the postal increases.
You know, we're charging more this year. So maybe that'll make up that difference. So we just leave it at 35?
I think so.
Yeah, you know, these are small amounts. That's why I.
Yeah, but if we left, if we left these amounts every year, because they're small amounts, we, you know, at some point, so. What's a certificate, Juliette?
A certificate is a standalone document with a seal and my signature that personal representatives or guardians typically use to confirm their authority. And it's sort of like a short, it's a short form that they can use instead of producing the court order.
Has there been an increase in the fee for certificates?
I've been encouraging people that they're useful and people have been purchasing them.
Because it looks like you're going to be up over $5,000 for the, for this year.
And another reason for that, thank you for reminding me, is that was also a fee increase. That the statute did, that took effect midway this year.
Okay, so can we increase the 4,200 to something more?
What were you thinking?
I'm thinking whatever you're comfortable with.
Maybe 48?
Just maybe 48.
I do.
I don't have any suggestions, other than this very unusual forms increase. Yeah, so thought of the forms.
And I'm going to look into that a little bit further and I'll let you know what I find.
Yeah. If that's true, keep up the good work.
I know, right? Like when I saw that. What else have I been giving away?
And a question, Cornell, where my guess is that you or Monica are keeping track of these amounts as we go through?
I am.
And Monica will make the changes on the spreadsheet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, now to the expenditure.
So the expenditures that I've done this year are pretty much in line, I feel, with the ones that I made last year. There's been some small increases that I anticipated as a result of an increase in cost. I've received notices from the public, the newspapers and the other public, the publishers of the statute books that we buy that due to rising costs, that they were going to increase the costs for us. In some cases, they mentioned that the increase in cost was going to be temporary. But I am planning on permanent increases. And that mostly affects the dues, subscriptions, statutes, and publications.
I don't have anything with the rest of them, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, it shows as a big increase, but it's, you know, it's $960. Right, that's the line we're talking about, Juliette?
Yes, I'm just working real quick.
Yeah, but $60 increases significantly.
She's only got a $20,000 increase in the whole budget. 17 of that is wages, so.
Yeah.
Benefits, so I mean, that's, she's got pretty much a flat budget.
Yes.
Nice to have you, Juliette.
Thank you.
Keep working on those revenues, though.
I'll do what I can.
1,500% increases. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So have a wonderful day.
You too.
Agency revenues has to do with EMA?
That's correct. EMA is down, and you'll see also the increase from the EMA is utilities, 15-100, you'll see a jump of 15,000 up to 20,000. A lot of that is because of the decrease in revenues. That's where. I'm also asking to change the line item that we have right now, which is Supplies 10-001. Right now, it's only $250, but with higher of Banyan, I need to get him a chair, file cabinet, and all the things. I might put it up to his 1,100.
Where are you, Chuck?
Supply line and the expenditures.
10-001. 10-001.
Well, let's back up here, though. Let's go down through this, Chuck.
Okay, sure. There's a lot of changes.
Yeah. Why don't we see? Why don't we see?
You looking for Banyan in there?
Yeah.
He won't be in there. He's our. It's going to be a separate. And that bring up a discussion. That's going to be 70-200. I talked to Scott. He didn't know if maybe we weren't prepared for the future. When we're moving from the our ones into the budget, should we be putting additional money in that line? Seventy dash two hundred technology.
Well, see, there's a couple ways to do this, though. My personal opinion is, is that we should be showing him in this budget. And whatever the cost of his is for wages and introductions, whatever else and whatnot, we show us an ARP revenue. So that we get him, so that we see him in the IT budget as an expenditure. So to use the ARP as a revenue to this, this account.
I, I ask that too, which way should we show it? We, we talked about that, Monica felt it would be easier, correct?
I know it's, I know it's probably, probably a lot easier because you don't have to make those, those changes, but it skews what the cost of the IT department is. That's the problem I have, is that when you start covering costs and paying them directly, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't pay them directly from a, from a equity account. You, you put those in your account, someone will pay it. And so it's the same thing here. I mean, two thousand twenty three, we're going to see a significant increase in the expense of our IT department. You're not going to see the IT budget, that's what bothers me, I guess.
Yeah, and that's what Scott had talked about, if we put seventy dash two hundred, when you start preparing for it, then when that year comes, you have the money in reserve and then you start showing the end budget from there on. I can do.
Expense, expense that, expense that in twenty two, but at that time, we didn't know that, but. What do you think? That's my opinion.
So.
Oh, excuse me, Paul, just a second, Monica. You make one revenue transfer of ARP into the account. And beyond that, it's a matter of doing the same thing out of the IT budget as you would be doing out of the ARP budget, is that correct?
Boy, I don't know, I, I'd have to check that with, with Scott. To make sure that we're.
How do you pay for wages and deductions, withholding and everything?
That's what we're, that's what we're doing now with, with, with Banyan and with the summer.
With Scott and the interim. And how, how do you, you just, but you have, have to pay each one weekly from that app account?
Yes.
So why is it any more work if you make one transfer for revenue into the IT account, then pay those costs from the IT budget as opposed to the ARP budget?
I, I don't know if you can do that on our, it's like a reinvest, that's like a reimbursement from.
Yeah.
And I don't think you have to pay it directly from.
I, I, I thought that, I'm just remembering that discussion from, you know, a while ago, but I, 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 I thought we were cautioned against, you know, showing it as a revenue to cover expenses as opposed to. I could be remembering that wrong, but.
Well.
I can check it, we can look into it.
Yeah, look into it.
Kitty might be a resource for that, too.
Yep.
No, that's not important to you two, let's not make a big deal out of this, put everybody in the effort to work. But I think anytime that we're, that we have an expense like this and we're using money from another account, we should show that as a revenue to this account and spend it out of the account and it's, it's, it's a true expense. That's just my personal opinion.
Just like you do for SRO or account contract. I mean, I understand the point, it's just whether. ARP is funding it.
Well, of course, obviously, if ARP says, no, you shouldn't do that, just like Paul said. It's a food issue.
Yeah, if ARP says you cannot do it, then do seventy dash two hundred, do we want to prepare in the future for that? If I put money in reserves for the salary? That was Scott's question, that we might, you might not want to.
Times are in favor of starting to try to budget for it, for real, instead of depending on ARPA funds. It makes me worried about all this, all the ARPA funds getting used for covering employee salaries.
It's, well, in this case, it would, it's because of the Spillman.
Right, so Spillman, cybersecurity.
Yep.
Monica, in Trio, you could set them up as the IT, whatever, whatever, whatever. But have those account numbers paid with your ARP line so that only those, only those, like, whatever number Banyan is, whatever line number he is, can be hooked to, I think you can say that.
I'll, I'll, I'd have to, I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, but I, but I do think that's.
I can't say for sure.
Yeah, I just think that that's an option.
It's, it's, they're saying exactly what.
It's, it's doing the same thing, in other words, showing it on the budget, it's being paid for the other part.
Right, like you put in your IT account numbers, but only those certain accounts, which would be his wage account and his like or whatever, his would pull from the ARP account.
Problem is, he doesn't have a unique withholding.
Right, correct.
Personal services.
And I have to, and the ARPA funds have to be reported under the ARP account.
Right, but I think you could pull that report. I do, I, yeah, I know, it's wicked, I, but I think.
But the reporting would show that, the reporting would show that sixty five thousand dollars came out of the ARP account for an IT specialist.
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check. I, I, I can't say for sure today.
But what about Chuck's point of whether we want to start putting money in reserve?
What do we want to do with this at some point? Take that money and put it towards the budget, that's what my pressure was.
What was Scott, he was, he was suggesting the seventy five hundred bumping that up to forty seven, five, and add forty thousand in reserves for future salary for Banyan.
He said that. Because in twenty four, we're not going to show his.
That's correct, and he said, do we want to start putting, do we want to bump up the two hundred account to?
And what's, what's he going to cost us?
Sixty three.
Yeah, what's that, another ten percent with all the deductions?
Yeah, yeah.
Could be twenty, could be twenty. Another thirteen, sixty, we just say sixty three?
Sixty three is his salary.
Seventy six, seventy five grand.
Yeah.
So if we, yeah, we made that total forty, Chuck, that'd be more than half of his twenty four salary.
Right, well, the other thing that's not added in there is his training is also covered by the ARP funds, so you're talking about.
But he's not going to need that same training again in twenty four, though.
Correct, but in twenty, next year, though, he will have trained, so, or Spillman, Spillman's summit, so.
Yeah, we're simply talking about, there is seventy account right now. Paul, you, you understand the conversation here?
I, I, I do, it, I, I just don't think that, I just, my recollection is that we can't use those ARP funds, you know, for an operating account, and I think that's why that's not in here. But I, I just don't know enough of it, about it, all I can do is rely on Monica and Cornell's expertise here and Scott's.
Yeah, but I think what, what, what we're proposing is to increase the reserve account seventy two hundred.
Yeah, to soften that blow in future years.
Through forty thousand.
We're not going to do it with the ARPA funds, though.
Yeah.
No, that's right, we're just going to, we're going to raise that.
Yeah.
So we're going to. I, I think it should go to forty two five, that's, that's half of the seventy five it's going to cost us. Plus the seventy five he needs for technology issues in the future.
So you're.
We, we, we'll jump in over the rest of this, but I figured we're on this, let's, let's solve it, let's resolve it now to whatever it's going to be and. Solve away half of his twenty four salary in twenty three, net reserve account, plus giving Chuck his seventy five hundred for future technology issues, making this line forty two thousand five hundred.
So, and, and the purpose of that is so that in the following year, we draw that down. So that we're not hitting all the budget.
We raise half of it, we draw down half.
Yeah.
And to soften the blow, we have to start raising his full amount.
Yeah, I, I can't, I can't argue with that.
Okay, John, with that, yep, so the number's forty two five for seventy two hundred.
Well, for, for the reserve account, it's forty two five.
That's what I'm saying, seventy dash two hundred is forty two thousand five hundred.
All right, so.
Instead of seventy five hundred?
Yeah, great. The increase is going to be half of, of Brandon's twenty four salary, give or take a few bucks. That's the intent. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, follow me.
Why is the equipment? What was the color significance?
That was prior year, he colored it, yeah, spreadsheet, I don't think there's significant anymore.
Anything colored is a, okay, so. The equipment is strictly computer related equipment, in other words, it's not office.
Well, the supplies is your office, you don't got office and computer supplies, but.
That's what I mean, if your equipment here is. Padware.
It's seventy dash one hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, that actually is ten PCs and a memory for the backup server. And that, that brings up another question I have, and I'm not sure how budgets should work. I've been purchasing PCs every year to rotate out the old ones. And we started that, actually, Christmas here, he bought about ten PCs, and they're dated to two thousand nineteen. I keep track of all those PCs, what year they bought, I'm doing, every year I'm replacing somewhere around ten of them. And so this coming year, I hope to replace another ten that are, you know, six, seven year old PCs. And then next year, I have about ten, twelve left next year, in two thousand, in two thousand twenty four, actually, then I'll do that. Then all those PCs that were in two thousand nineteen are going on their sixth year and it's time to replace them. So I'm doing like a five to six year rotation of PCs. So that's not going to change, that's going to be pretty even every single year. It's, I'm rotating out ten to twelve PCs every year, trying to keep up with all the technology changes with PCs, Windows changes and stuff like that. Is that the best spot, what it is out of reserves every year, or should that be a budget line later on? Because I'm doing it every single year.
The amount you're raising is the amount you're going to spend?
Every single year.
Doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose of having you in a reserve account?
That's why I questioned that.
Well, but it's sort of a CIP account because he's, you know, it may be a time where you don't replace that many, but we budgeted for that many and they may be the opposite. So I understand why it's here.
Yeah, Paul, I think he's saying that that isn't true, though, that he's going to have to replace ten a year. He may be doing this for, for, because it's a simple future, every year.
PCs, raising up money to replace ten.
Because the other thing is, the process says that if it's in the reserve account, he's got to come and get prior approval before spending it. And if it was in his regular expenditure account, he could simply spend it as, as he accrued the bill. I think there should be a dash seven, seven hundred account, I mean, I'm sorry, a dash ten, zero, zero, four account equipment. And that money should be moved up there as a regular annual expenditure.
Doesn't change the.
Doesn't change the bottom line, it makes it easier for the, right, Monica, would it make it easier for the process?
Yes.
You don't have to file for approval for transfers.
That's right.
You don't have to make those transfers. Nothing says we can't leave seventy dash two hundred, I mean, a dash one hundred.
Yeah, so like, we're sure of that money in this year, right?
And leave, right, leave the twelve thousand in there, take the money for the, the ten PCs and put it into a regular expenditure.
Out of curiosity in that light, so like, when we budgeted this, why didn't we think we were only going to have to spend fifteen thousand if we knew we were going to have to? Did we know we were going to have to take care of ten? Because I'm just wondering, like, how many did you replace last year, twenty twenty one, was it like half as many or?
I, about the same amount, I actually, I think I did eleven computers this year.
It's fine, I was just trying to figure out why we budget, I, we only budgeted fifteen thousand the year before. We didn't forget that many to replace.
Well, part of the difference is the price increases.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but John, your question is, why did it go from fifteen thousand to thirty two?
Well, twelve thousand is memory for my server. So it went from, went up to twenty thousand, or PCs.
You projected fifteen, you went to twenty.
I see what you're saying.
And that's, that's reasonable, I guess, considering.
So it's zero, zero, four, twenty thousand now.
Well, I'm proposing that ten dash zero, zero, four be the equipment and be twenty thousand dollars. Do you understand that, Paul?
Yeah, you're, yes.
And you're, you're okay with that?
Yeah, well, it seems high to me, just using raw numbers, so you're saying two thousand, okay, you're saying two thousand dollars each for a PC, but you must be including some peripherals in there and.
A lot of times I go buy Ethernet cards or I go buy extra memory or stuff like that.
Monitor, yeah.
That's correct.
Is the server memory always going to be every year though, too?
No, that's a one time.
That's a one time.
Are you going to spend that money in twenty three for the server memory?
That's correct.
Why should that go in reserve again?
Not sure there should.
It says that one's.
Monica says it shouldn't. If you're going to, if you're going to raise it this year, I'm going to spend it, I mean, you're going to raise it.
That's why we're bringing it up, is to, to get that.
So, if you're going to spend, I think the whole thirty two thousand should be going into the zero, zero, four, the zero, zero, four account.
Okay.
But if he has any money. This, this year, we'll have to budget for that, but going forward, we'll have to keep that in mind.
Twenty, we're doing the twenty three budget.
Yeah, I don't have to save the twenty twenty four, we're not going to have that same.
The end of October, then it's yours.
Well, it's undesignated, then we can decide what to do with it, but it's, I don't, yeah. I guess we're in agreement that we're going to go zero, zero, four for thirty two thousand. But we still want to leave that line, correct? Is there any money in that? There's, no, that's, if we're not going to raise anything. Okay, Monica.
All right, I think that one was, wasn't that one there for if it was a server that crashed or you had to replace something and that's the reason that line was there?
Yeah, see, I thought that reason for that line was, like, let's say, I mean, individual PCs, okay, I understand that argument. But like a server, that you replace only five, every five years. You want to incur, you want to sock away money every year so that every fifth year, you're, you're not spiking the budget. I thought that that's what that account was for.
For this year, there is, there is fifteen thousand budgeted.
I see, I thought that that, that account served not only individual PCs, but some of your other equipment that you're not replacing every year, like the server I just brought.
Right.
A hypothetical server.
Well, in five or six years, if you want to replace the server, that's a one hundred thousand dollar server. So do you want to be put twenty thousand per year in that for, going out five years, so you replace it in five or six years?
But that, yes, we'd raise it here and, and transfer it into our equity account, correct?
So you want to, so you're saying keep some money in the reserve account here?
Well, I, I would say, yeah, you would probably want to keep, you know, twenty in that to do exactly what Paul's.
But money's, so money's in these, these, these reserve accounts has to be reserved each year, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you can transfer this into an equity account and it stays there till we remove it, correct?
So.
If we're going to, if we're going to salt some money away for something.
A future server in six years, yeah.
Put it here and then, and into the year, transfer it into an equity account.
Yes, yes.
But my, my point is here, is that I don't think. I don't think that we should be bringing that account to zero, because I think that account is more than just the ten PCs we're talking about. I think buried in that account is the equipment such as servers. Is that, so that's why I'm pushing back a little bit.
Well, the twelve thousand of that thirty-two is the server memory which he is going to spend in twenty-three. Correct, Chuck?
Correct.
So I'm saying there's no need to reserve that money in the twenty-three budget because he's going to raise it and spend it in the same budget year.
Yeah, yes, but.
Go into this newly-created zero zero four equipment account. But is there something that you're salting money away for every year?
We should be, just like Paul said, for a server in five or six years, which will be a hundred thousand dollars.
And we've never done that.
We've never done that.
So if we're going to start raising money for a multi-year project, then, then this, we, we should be raising more money than the thirty-two and putting it back in this reserve account.
If you're gonna do that for a server, it should be about twenty thousand for five years and you're.
But, and, and I'm just bringing up the server as an example.
Well, I think.
We should be looking at all of this in aggregate and, you know, e- even though that's why I'm pushing back a little bit about not having this a reserve account, because I think it should be a reserve account. We, you know, let's say we don't replace PCs for some reason this year. You, we still should incur the expense because we're wearing it out. So Cornell, I don't know how else to explain it other than this is a CIP thing.
But Paul, we're not, we're not removing the line.
No, I understand that, but you're removing the money from the line.
Yeah, right. Simply because the money in that line and whatnot is going to be raised and spent in the same budget year.
But what Paul is saying, I think, is that.
We need to raise some more money.
Right.
And that's what Chuck is saying. Now, do we want to raise twenty thousand, though?
Sounds like it. Yeah, that server that I'm running runs twenty-two virtual servers. So, I mean, the piece of hardware is, uh, is an expensive piece of hardware.
Yeah.
So yeah, actually, it's twenty-two computers. You can think of it virtually. It's not just one. So it is a hundred thousand dollar server.
Are you prepared to raise twenty more thousand, Paul, in the reserve?
What? I, I guess is, the answer is no, but we should be because we're just kicking the can down the road. I, I, we, we need a I, I don't know how you get something like this started, other than a little bit at a time. And I thought that this account was our attempt to do that, because we sort of had a similar conversation last year about, you know, trying to, um, because he's wearing down, I keep coming back to the server, but I hate to. We, we're wearing it down. We're incurring an expense every year. It's just like that memory. That didn't just pop up. That's been happened, transpiring over time. So really, we should have been socking money away, you know, in the past. Well, we can't go backwards, so. Uh, but what we can do is we can use some, some upper funds to help us do some of that.
Remember, Paul, there isn't, there isn't much past. I mean, we didn't, we didn't even have an IT department three years ago.
Yeah.
It's not held a lot of past to, to.
I'm not trying to beat up on Pat. What, what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm trying to put in English a CIP program and, and I think this is a perfect candidate for it. That's why.
Yeah, I'd like to see a CIP program, Chuck, for, at some point here.
Dr. Billy, where a CIP program.
You know, your capital improvement.
Okay.
So in other words, how many of these five-year, ten-year pro, uh, programs can you see us getting involved in? And, and what year we're going to pay the money and what's it going, you know, that, that, that CIP? I mean, Cornell can help you do a CIP outline. Let me ask you a question, though, Chuck. The fifteen thousand that we raised in twenty-two under this, when you raised that, did you know you were going to spend all of it in twenty-two?
Yes, I knew it was all.
Okay, so we said, had this discussion last year, that the fifteen shouldn't even been there before, Paul, because he was going to raise it this year and spend it this year. So we, we're talking today about the first time that, that Chuck is going to have some kind of a building fund towards major projects. And Chuck is saying, I ought to have at least twenty thousand towards a server.
To replace every five or six years, and I'm talking about twenty thousand PCs on a rotation basis.
Yeah, I think the PCs to me, since you're talking about a yearly expense, you know, it's had to be dealt. To me, that makes sense to move that just create the line that you already suggested. But you're right, I think, uh, the reserve account is where we need to do our, the building fund, CIP.
Well, you have an capital expense of a hundred thousand dollars. You should be setting aside money, because one thing, uh, it might not last five years. It could.
Yeah.
And then we go earlier, you ought to have.
Yeah, we have a lot of. Hit with the full hundred thousand when it crashed two years from now. If we didn't, you know, if we didn't.
In the last budgets we've had, um, that I've worked on, you have the PC money into a capital account, because some days you buy, or some years you buy five, some years you replace ten, but you're always putting money in because the number of PC replacements is different.
But you're, you're pretty sure that you're gonna, you're gonna spend everything you can raise in PCs for.
That's correct. We, we're running somewhere around a hundred PCs and I'm on a five-year rotation. That's actually closer to twenty PCs. And what's been happening is a lot of departments, like the Sheriff Office, buys their own. And so I've been buying a few for them and they've been paying for a few out of their own budget. But if it was, it was all coming out of my budget, to be closer to twenty PCs, not ten.
But the point is, is that you're not going to buy three this year and seventeen next year. You're gonna buy, you're gonna buy ten a year, you're gonna buy whatever.
Now that twenty thousand can buy as many as I can and replace them.
We're back to, we're back to whether or not we want to put a sum of money into a building fund for future technology expenses, such as server.
Well, that, but my pushback is that I'm, I'm trying to deal with it in aggregate, not piece by piece. So that's why, that's why I thought this account existed, was, you know, exactly what Cornell stated. Maybe the practice is we do the same every year. But, you know, maybe, I don't know, I, I hate to see an account, one for servers, one for PCs, one for, you know, to me, it should all be technology equipment, you know, and dealt with an aggregate. And I said, I thought that's why this account is here, because I don't see different accounts for servers and PCs and memory and, well, you know, whatever.
But Paul, we have, we have an equipment account in the expenditure budget. We have an equipment account in the revenue. And the equipment account in the regular budget is money we're going to raise this year and spend this year. The equipment, the money we put in the reserve account is a building fund towards a major purchase in the future. Or pending purchase that we're not going to spend in twenty-three. So we don't have several accounts, one for PCs, one for the server and so on. What we have is two equipment accounts, one for those expenditures that we're going to have next year, that we're raising the money next year. The other one's for, like, the server, but it doesn't have to be the server. It's a reserve account. We let it build. We put it into the reserve technologies and spend it as, as needed in the future, so.
Yeah.
Back again, how much, if we're going to do that, how much do we want to raise in twenty-three towards this building fund, this reserve account?
Well, we can't answer that here. I mean, especially when I hear that, you know, s- some of the equipment comes out of here and some of it comes out of departmental budgets. So I, I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, without the CIP program, without the CIP, I don't know if we can even come up with a, with a a good number, because we don't know what the future expenditures are going to be for major projects, but I mean, Chuck has already given us a hundred thousand dollar server that's going to be replaced sometime in the next four or five years, so let's raise at least twenty thousand for that today, and maybe by December, we, before we approve the budget, we'll have a CIP program that we can come up with a better number. So let's, let's call it twenty thousand for now.
That's fair.
I agree with that. Uh, yeah. And I guess you, Chuck, work on the long-range plan. Whether that's like, you know, you have a server and then like, we have, you know, we have server memory listed here, so, and that next server. And I, I guess I'm kind of wondering, like, is what all is going to be entailed?
And I, I can see future memory in another year or two, because of, we're, we're increasing the number of virtual servers all the time.
Keep that in your.
So I guess I need to work on that a little bit, CIP.
Sounds good.
Now, I haven't traveled for years, but is it really going to cost fifty-five hundred dollars to send this guy to Spelman training?
Well, we've, actually, we were, I think, what do we have this year? We're up around thirty-five hundred dollars, and that was to send Raleigh to Florida. That was his plane tickets, his hotel and, uh, his rental vehicle. So we're so the five thousand was five hundred dollars for mileage, and five thousand for Spelman training again, but it was thirty-five hundred. I mean, we might be able to knock that down further, but good chance that it might be going out to Utah instead of Florida this year, which would be more costly. So that's why we've increased it, location.
Alright, so you're asking for ten percent on your.
That is correct.
Any of the short, to tell me why I should make it ten percent rather than seven percent?
Oh, when I was hired here, I was a, hired as a system admin. I'm not a system admin. I'm the IT director. I do all of IT here. I think that brings me more in line to the bottom of what the scale of an IT director makes, so that's why.
And we haven't kept up with that. I, I haven't been around very long. You, you're saying that the salary, excuse me, the salary has not been keeping up? Is that, did I hear that right?
In my eyes, I'm coming up to the bottom range of what an IT director does make.
And then he's just saying his roles a bit are wrong than what he really got hired for.
And that's right, I'm done with all IT. I'm not just a system ad.
Yes. And that's a net effect of just twenty-three hundred sixty-one dollars more than the seven percent would have been for it. Is that what that number means?
Yes.
Twenty-three hundred sixty-one dollars, and then take a chance that Chuck's going to leave for a maybe eight, two thousand dollar job across the street, so.
Yeah.
What, Chuck, what's your title? Is this a title change? I mean, do we, did we keep up with the title?
Well, when I do, did my business cards, I say IT director, because that's.
Okay.
So.
That's what we're calling it, right?
So how did we end up saving some money in, in your backup disaster?
Uh, because of the new server, but that was some of the cost of the new server was included in the backup disaster recovery cost, so it actually reduced it down by that amount. It was a expense that was included with the server.
And we're projecting a decrease in computer support.
Yeah, I'm trying to eliminate a lot of stuff with Sierra computers, so we're leaning on that less and less every year. I have a couple of big projects still to do with them, but after that, it'll get even less.
Uh, what, you got anything else you'd like to bring up?
No.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Dennis.
So, what, Lee, any news next door?
Yes, uh, no, no, and they're particularly mom about the subject. And some actions taking place, I don't know what it is.
Which next door, we told him?
The property, the new.
And, and it's been reiterated to me as well that there will be no addition to the facility here on this campus. So if they've got cards, they're holding them pretty close to the vest.
It's mysterious, isn't it?
And, yeah, it does. And also, we're told, oh, we're on the list. I remember, yeah, on the list for, for.
Number one.
Projects. Number one, they won't say that either, but.
We're on the list.
Yeah. And actually, sixteen counties, there's not that many left. They, they haven't made some type of major local correction or even a new facility for the locations. Canterbury, and Oxtone, to name a couple. And then, of course, Belkow, Waldo County was a, a new building, but joined the other building. And then the big renovation of Washington County. And I know the, uh, legislation is in place that allows them to make this purchase. That is passed. I don't know if it's been signed yet, but they've made no, no overtures to us about it. But, and, and of course, the, the, the underlying effect is that when we go to see them about a rent increase, which the last email I sent to Mr. Gray, he didn't even respond to see where we are and if, if we can't get a planned increase in what we're providing, because let's face it, we'll look through here, energy costs alone warrant an increase for anybody. And they give you the, well, we're, we're still studying what we're going to do and where we're going to go with that, so we don't want to make any moves at this time. So we're kind of in a holding pattern till we find out.
So.
So that's, it can be a curse and a blessing to find out what they're doing.
Do it, so we don't, we can't increase their rent, right? They have a lease that.
We do. It's the last, the last increase of our current agreement took place last year.
Okay, so we're not at liberty to, to change that number in any way.
And it has, it's, we can demand it, I guess, and see what happens.
This is, well, the odd situation here is, Paul, is that we're, we're mandated by statute to provide, uh, space to the court.
Superior.
And so, but they're not required to sign whatever lease with lease agreement we're given. It has to be negotiated. But how do you negotiate with somebody when they get, when they get space guaranteed to them, whether they pay the bill or not? So that's really the, the, the bugaboo here, is that they're in a very good position for not paying an increase because they don't have to.
Right.
They could, they could stall us for the next five years, not paying any increase in what they're actually, yeah.
Is one of being charitable.
Yeah, yeah, being charitable. Bruce McGuster here to help you, yeah.
So we're, we, we can't, I know we're required to give them space, but we're not required to give them space free, are we?
Yes.
We are.
Superior court space is, uh, we're required by statute to provide at no cost.
The agreement that was when they first signed into statute was actually negotiated by the district attorney and it designated these spaces.
Which was, which would be used for district space, district court space and other uses. Uh, in fact, a big, a big discussion was, is a conference room being used for a superior court case or a district court case? And then, and you know, and they're saying it doesn't matter, because we have established a, a square foot that we can build and it's not going to go beyond that unless it's negotiated. So, yeah, we're.
I hear there's a time.
We're on the, uh, I don't know, the, the money bottom. We're on the, I don't know, the money bottoming this issue.
So there's nothing, there's, so really, there's nothing to talk about on the revenue page.
Unless, unless we get some, if we heard that they're going to stay here another five years. I'd be actively seeking an agreement that would. That would spell out an incremental increase over those five years, but I can't even get them to answer that question.
Well, I can tell you that they're going to be here three years because they can't possibly build something that fast. So I'm wondering, I think we should be treating them like. They're going to be here five years because they probably will, even if they acquired the property tomorrow. They couldn't do it that fast.
Well, you're, I agree. And this is also compounded by the fact that they've had significant staff changes on the top end over there as well. The, the facilities administrators retired, there's a new guy, and he seems to be. Amenable to whatever, but is also moving very slowly. Their courts facilities person has changed. We haven't even met that person yet. And so kind of waiting for the dust to settle in that area as well. So it's been, it's been exasperating the last year or so.
So our agreement with Dennis is up for renewal when?
I'd say if we had a new plan, I believe it, there, it runs on their fiscal year, which is a. July through June. And so we'd be implementing something about like right now, if we had an increase for this year. But we don't, and I. Will send another request for review for our status. And see what they say about.
Well, to me, we got to act like we don't know what they're doing, because we don't in reality. And we need to, you know, keep moving forward. If that pushes them to move up, great. If it doesn't. Then at least we have an agreement with them, but to me, I, I, I'm not for waiting for what they decide. Because they will never decide.
Yeah, agreed. So I have a note here for myself that says that I'll send a request for review. For a period of five years. And maybe that will, unless it's some response or even a planned increase.
How did they get increased space, like that storage down in the basement? How did that?
Yeah, that was something that they, they came to the county with a need. And of course, being shared at the time, there was also a need in the county for storage space. And that's was used as leverage to negotiate an increase in the space that were provided. And an incremental cost increase. So they, in other words, they had a need and were willing to talk and negotiate.
But that space is not guaranteed by statute.
No, but it is, it is covered under the square footage covered in the, in the MOU that we have with them.
But that MOU is contingent upon paying, correct?
Yeah.
And the cost of that MOU is going up, and they're not paying, maybe they are going to be losing some of the space. I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be, when you all said that, it could be insignificant, but it's just irritable.
Yeah, it may be an area where we can get some leverage, so you think.
We've got to move on.
All right.
Better than expenditures. So Dennis, give us your pitch for the increase in your wages.
Yeah, anyway, so you'll see this increase on the manager side. Is basically. The same reasoning that Chuck hears is my, my work and my position, not only in the private sector, but in other counties. Those wages have gone up dramatically, and I really haven't seen that much of that. I have spent many budget cycles advocating for my employees, as you'll recall. And especially for my assistant. Irreplaceable in my view, but not a ton of advocating for myself, and so this. This is my attempt to advocate for, for myself, and it still keeps me. At the bottom of the ladder for appointed exempt in this county, but it does move me more within line with, with what. I could easily get in the private sector, which I don't want to. To use that as anything, I'll take whatever you give me, but I think I've earned it.
What's that, what's that comment mean? This increase offers a correction?
Yeah, sure. So when you work here at the county, appointed exempt, there's no yearly planned increase. The only thing you're ever, you can take part in. When the commission is generous and offers a raise, that's good, but unlike the pay scale, which moves up each year.
Plus, plus the increase.
Plus the cola, but all, all you get is the cola in this game.
Right.
That's really where that comes from.
No, no review system.
But no scheduled increase system, no period, whether it was tied to a review or not.
If you're on a pay scale, you get your step increase every year, plus you get a colon on top of that. All they get is a colon. Well, I can tell you, gentlemen, from, from all my experience in county government. Dennis is the most qualified person we've ever had in this position, forty three. Whatever it is. But the, but the. Only comment is, is that how is eleven point one percent increase going to set? With the department who are only getting seven, we are willing to. tolerate that, risk that, or?
Well, no, I'm, I'm, it's the same issue we just, we, we faced with Chuck. This is. You know, and, you know, I hadn't been around long enough to see, to know if this is pervasive or if this is, you know. I hate to be going one by one. I mean, we could be starting something, but we also could be solving something. I don't know. I don't know what, what it is here, but.
I think Dennis, though, that maybe before we finalize this and whatnot, if you could do a survey of the counties and see what your maintenance directors are getting.
Well, he, he just touched, Dennis, you touched on that, right?
We have a, just like Chuck, though, it's, it's, you know, it's anecdotal. We didn't see any data. I believe, you know, I believe that the cost of IT is terribly expensive, and it doesn't surprise me a bit that. Chuck would be on the low end of that. I don't know what maintenance directors are. I have no clue. And you can, you know, you can simply call MCCA, and I think that information is available. Yeah, and it would be good justification for, you know, for us if we do approve that.
Well, Cornell, aren't there resources? Main municipal must have resources like that also, right?
That's true. Well, the commission. By the list serve or county administrators had a survey. We weren't able to participate because we didn't have enough staff to do it, but they just recently did a. Survey. And I think there's a fee to get the results so that they share the cost of that done. Or you can just call, you know, three counties of similar size and see the facilities. Other departments.
Call some county that bought it and ask for the information.
Yeah, I mean, we want to be fair.
It's good justification. I mean, it's, it's good documentation. Yeah, I'll make the effort. All right, what else we got here?
Well, you could say, I flatlined this budget where. Possible to do so.
Well, best in your prime time, though, up on the ways is this, we, we approved another prime time position for you or something, didn't we?
You know, what we did was we took, when we launched inmate help, we took one of our crew members. Broadened during the day, half a day, and that's worked out beautifully, although it doesn't. It has never really replaced. Having inmate help. And so I really love this what we can do without having that, and having, this also would allow us to participate in. Andy mentioned before, that sharing of administrative positions. And I would, I would be able to, to use that person for a day or week or so as well. And also, it's because the wage is going up, and so the, the old figure only provides us. It was seventy five percent of what it used to when we were paying, you know, eleven, twelve dollars an hour. Now we're paying fifteen, sixteen. So it's, it's compounded by that factor as well. And it would allow us to have another prime time position, if we could find one, to fill gas and. To smooth out our operation.
What about inmate help? Is that, is that like gone forever? Or do we have any hope of?
Well, we, we had, we had a couple earlier in the summer. We really made great use of it. It was lovely. But we're told at the time that even that was a fluke. They're right now, they, they're full to capacity, and they have no one to do their laundry. And a lot of it, it's the sentencing. We've discussed this all briefly, briefly. No one can participate in the program if they have pending charges or any unresolved. Legal matters before any court. So the way that they handle these things these days are, almost everyone has something in the system. And so they're not eligible. And so you get sixty inmates and three of them are eligible for a work program. Because it's, it's something that, the larger. Point in, in relative to this phenomenon is sentence guidelines changing. Years ago, they changed a lot of, of, of the way jails work. And that was supposed to go with, along with some sentencing guidelines, including rehabilitation and drug treatment and so forth. That never came to fruition, so we're, and you feel for anyone in corrections right now. It's awful.
I can tell you about that. There was a fear when COVID set in and they started kicking everybody out of the jails and reducing sentences. And giving them alternative to sentences, that once COVID corrected itself, that, that, that would continue. The advocates would, and, and I think you may be seeing some of that, that, okay, for three years, you haven't been jailing people under sentences. Why are you continuing to do it now, even though COVID is not a problem? So I think that, that could be, and when I hear that sixty inmates are up there and fifty seven of them are pre-sentenced, I say, you know. They're not sentencing people to jail like they did back five years ago.
Yeah. And so that's had a real ripple effect, not, not just on us, throughout every county is in the same boat.
So it's not going to get better.
No. So this is a, a, a small way we can, you know, reduce the effect of that, that loss. Which is something that we lament, but also the county business has to, has to go forward.
How many, so how many part-time employees do you have right now?
I have just one.
One, right. And you're wanting to increase it?
If I could have another. Person that, you know, uses the same pool of money, but two people give us a lot more flexibility. I know the, the young man now working part-time receives wonderful, does a great job. But again, unless we're going to make it full-time, it's, it's only going to work. Less than twenty nine hours a week. Sometimes. If we have someone on vacation, then someone gets sick, then there's, that's two people. So we all put our hands on that.
Remember this, Kevin, and I do, but the twenty nine hours is twenty nine average.
Yeah, yeah, understood, and then.
We do work at fifty hours a week, he's still qualified.
Yeah, and we do take advantage of this sometimes, but we have to keep a close eye.
I don't see anything else in here that's, I don't understand and.
And the rest is mostly energy and some cleaning costs and.
Service contracts, that doesn't surprise you. You see anything else?
What scares me a little bit is your actual for twenty two estimated is sixty two thousand three hundred. Basically for electricity, and you have budgeted fifty.
Yeah, this is. The, where we are in the year right now has a lot to do with that. Because the medium use rates for electricity started off twenty one, twenty two cents per kilowatt hour. But are now in around seven, six something and seven, so we're seeing a real dip in that. And I don't know what the contract prices for next year are, this, which is why, it's just. Honestly, it's a, it's a, it's a middling approach to not include those extremes of twenty, twenty one percent. Cents per kilowatt hour, but something that might go seasonally up to fifteen or fourteen cents a kilowatt hour. Hopefully level off in the summer.
Okay, so you put some thought in that number, it looks like.
Yeah, it, it's, it will also, I don't want to estimate seventy thousand dollars for electricity, and then it's forty.
Yeah.
Although we might make use of that windfall, but I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of Hancock County to do that. And a lot of it, the rest is subjective, and similar to the, to the discussions with Chuck. These budget figures will determine what work we're able to accomplish throughout the year. How, to what lengths we can go with our planned improvements. Of, that doesn't, if it doesn't rise to the, to the level of a capital expense, flooring, for instance. We're going to be in pretty good shape with that particular situation. But each year, you know, you can plan on. A facelift in an office area, and the budgeted amount determines the. The extent to which we can perform those repairs and improvements. Whereas energies, we're going to, we have to pay the bill. That they send, they don't have a lot of control over those costs. Or I actually should say, we do, and have saved. Our usage in electricity, for instance, is historically, I mean, gradually down, 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 based on. Dynamic improvements in our systems efficiencies, but we pretty much played that playbook out as well. So now we're dealing with the flat cost that we see.
Monica, in twenty two, we raised two thousand dollars for vehicle reserve account. That hasn't been transferred. So that sixty seven fifty is really eighty seven fifty. Can we add the two thousand to that G account? The G account right now is sixty seven fifty, but we, we can add another. Yeah, it goes, it's really eighty seven fifty we have on hand.
Where are you looking, Bill?
Yeah, back in your, your reserve accounts, your last.
Yeah, the vehicle, yeah.
We, we raised two thousand in twenty two, and in no way over there, it says the G account has sixty seven fifty in it.
Oh, I see, yeah.
My question is, have we transferred the two thousand yet?
No.
And the answer is no, so that really is eighty seven fifty we have on hand in January of twenty three, so.
Yeah, and then this year, we're going to put three thousand into it, okay.
You have, you have almost twelve thousand in there for.
Yes, and you recall, last year, we decided we make our trade. For a pickup truck, I haven't even looked based on prices and availability, really. But I'm hoping in the spring, we can, we, we make our trade, use our reserve, and take whatever balance is left out of the. The G account was something to be agreed on last year.
Your spend still has a couple pickups left, correct?
If, whenever we did that. You know, if it's the right vehicle, that could really work out for us, but right, the goal is to get ahead of that, so. Few years, so we wouldn't be hitting that reserve, so I, we still in five years have enough money to replace that pickup.
What about, you know, we have a lot of heat pumps and. What about, you know, we have a lot of heat pumps and that kind of thing. Is there any CIP and thought into some of those things? Because I mean, those have a life of, you know, ten years or so.
Yeah, they do, and that is, in my three fifty line, two oh three fifty, that figure is, is there to replace one or two systems a year as they fail. We've seen the rate, actually, we haven't seen too much with respect to that, but we have been able to do things like replace the IT server room unit and replace the IT server room and deeds unit as well. And we just, just had a casualty in the auxiliary courtroom where that unit has failed and was, there's no replacement for it. What are you gonna do?
What account are you on now?
Oh, six, two zero, three fifty.
Oh, six.
Well, in other words, it's, it's the twenty-three fifty.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So this twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand is not just repairs.
Yeah, that's a replacement, small equipment, yes.
Replacement?
And if it was something catastrophic, something larger, like our chiller job, we plan to replace that as a capital improvement. It's, I think it rises above appliance maintenance, for instance. This was one of the units last year, or year before, actually, that we had an operating unit there, but it was beginning to fail. We replaced it with a heat pump out of our budget. But yeah, any, any contribution to the reserve account is, I know you contemplate it and consider it, is money in the bank in my eyes.
Nothing in your twenties is.
No, that's all budget.
You're gonna spend that all.
Plan for repairs and.
Everything you raise, you're gonna spend in twenty-three.
Right. Unless there were a cause, you know, to reduce that for obvious reasons, which, which might come from the top down.
You're not raising money, though, in your twenty, twenty counts and planning to reserve it for another year.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the improvements we, we need to make is circular pumps in the jail. Twenty years old, they're reaching the end of their economic life.
You intend to raise that money the same year you spend it for the entire project?
That is an example of a capital project, yeah. So that'll be, I'll come to the commission with the proposal to go on the street. Out of the G account.
Out of the G account.
Right, whereas if it were like the pump coupler or a smaller part of that, we have monies in the budget to repair that as it happens.
How many hours a week are you giving to part-time people, part-time person?
Right now, he's working Monday and Fridays and Wednesdays when he can.
Eight-hour shifts?
Yes.
So twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours a week?
Yeah. And that is, is, was to bring him up to speed to cover vacations and so forth this summer. That'll fall back as the fall comes, because we also had planned to come before you to ask if he could work out a classification, because Diane was gonna take her trip to the Philippines, which she had to cancel. I don't know if you guys have heard that. Yeah. Her immigration status is such that she needs to be on-site for hers. She's fulfilled all the requirements for citizenship and awaits only the naturalization ceremony, but they can't tell her when that's gonna be. And if she's away, you know, for three months when this happens, she'll miss the boat and she doesn't dare to do that, so she sacrificed her trip back, that's really. And she's just devastated over it, but, you, she's a, she's a remarkable person. Great, great person.
You'll listen.
I'm all set. All right. So I'll get that information as soon as I can on board to you immediately.
What, you, you know, give it to the finance people?
Just make it out of a book. Administrator, yeah. Yeah, just what I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Jules.
Good morning. What are you looking at first?
Transfer taxes, of course, always an interesting one. Is that setting the level off now?
Um, I ran the report this morning. As of yesterday, the county has received one hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. So we're gonna be, we'll be over budget on that this year.
What's the projection for twenty-three?
Um, well, the sales, the house sales, regular house sales are dropping off because there's nothing to buy, but the big places are still selling. The expensive places are still selling and I project that they'll still keep selling. So history shows that someone's gonna recoup some of that money.
So what, what I'm wondering with that number is, the five-year actual average is two eighty-nine. You, you have two twenty-five in there, last year you had budgeted two hundred. You think you're gonna do about two sixty this year, although you've upped that a little bit now, right?
Um, no, I don't, no, I'm not, I'm not sure that we're gonna hit two sixty this year, but we're definitely gonna be over two hundred. We're gonna, we might make two thirty-five, two thirty-six.
Okay, so, so I misunderstood your, I, I thought you were comparing, that number that you gave us, I thought compared with that was an update to that one oh seven.
Yeah, it was an update. That's what we've actually, the county has actually received so far. But this, this is the time of year that we actually are busy with big sales. But even if we get that or not, I can't guarantee that we're gonna get to two fifty-seven. I don't, I mean, it might project out that way, but I don't think so.
Okay, so all I was, my only point in that was I, I thought that maybe we had some room in the two twenty-five towards, more towards two fifty or two seventy, but you don't think so?
No, no, I, I, and like Billy said, I would rather have unprojected.
Yeah, of course.
Than, than under, because, you know, I like to be pretty close to making my mark.
Julie, you don't, you don't have in front of you what the sales were to, up to May first, I mean, the first third of the year?
No, no, I don't have, I didn't.
Is the last third of the year equivalent, perhaps, the first third with the middle third being the highest in that?
Um, no, habitually, habitually here, our last quarter is the, the biggest quarter. But, but we're, we're not selling regular homes. I mean, there's very few regular home sale. We are busy in the fall from the people coming in the summer and finding something and buying it. And all they're gonna be buying right now is big sales. But, so we're still gonna pick up revenue, but we're not gonna pick up volume.
But you, you think the, the last third of the year, that would still be your highest?
It is.
Well, Jules, for one ninety-five and two-thirds of the year, why aren't we gonna be at three hundred at the end of the year?
Be, because we're not selling regular homes. We're only gonna be selling big homes. And like I said, the revenue might be up, but the volume isn't. So we might sell ten homes and get whatever for them, to, you know, ten big ones, but we're still only getting ten percent of the sale price. You know, the sales tax, the revenue tax.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Instead of selling forty houses or a hundred houses.
Yeah, but it makes a difference how many you sell. It's, it's the value of the total of sales that we can get our revenue from, right?
Correct.
So what makes a difference whether you sell ten four-million-dollar homes or you sell a hundred forty-thousand-dollar homes? It's the same revenue.
It is, but I am not, I'm not, I'm telling you, we're not gonna see the volume. We're not going to see the numbers that we normally see in sales. But we can't guarantee what the cost is. I'm just telling you that they are higher-priced homes that are selling, but we are not gonna see the volume. That's honestly, we only, we, for E-recordings yesterday, we only had three deeds in all of our E-recordings yesterday. That's like nothing in the E-record.
I know, but when you, when you tell me that the last quarter is your highest.
Generally, yeah.
Revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't care what the volume, so when I look at your revenue for, for two-thirds of the year at hundred ninety-five, it tells me that we're gonna be close to three hundred thousand if your revenue for your last third is as good as your first two-thirds.
Well, then, I mean, you know, I don't mind being wrong, but I'm just telling you, I'm.
Oh, I think, I think somewhere between you and I is a better number than two twenty-five.
Well, I can give you two thirty. The bottom is gonna fall out, Billy. I'm just, I'm just gonna tell you, we are going to hit a recession. We are.
Well.
I can see it. I mean, I watch in my documents, I know what it's doing.
Yeah, it's, I mean, anybody who's ever taken an economics class can tell you that. It's, it's, I mean, it's gotta happen. And, and I'm thinking that the more I hear you speak, Julie, I, I, I think that, that two eighty-nine is skewed by the last two years. So that's why I asked what I did about the two fifty-seven. I think two twenty-five you're gonna hit, I think probably two thirty you're gonna hit, but I, if you're questioning two fifty-seven, I'd be hard-pressed to say two fifty.
Right.
Well, Julie, I got a twelve-pack of one whitey to go to fifty.
Well, this year, but I'm not gonna.
Two fifty for next year.
I don't think so. I, I'll take that via two. And I like it ice cold.
There's another phenomenon. Two what? Two fifty. So this gets paid out.
Yeah.
Are you, are you agreeing with two fifty? No, I'm agreeing that you're probably gonna order some beer. I.
I mean, you can butt my, you can butt my numbers.
Give me the, give me the two fifty and I'll give you the beer.
Listen, you can butt my numbers and, you know, and I seriously, if I make it, great. I seriously do not have a problem being wrong, but I.
I tell you, there's phenomena that's developed, so according to a couple, real estate agents, I saw. But one of them is, is that we had this, this great surge of out-of-state is coming here buying properties soon as it came on the market. It's been one winter in Maine and now they wanna get rid of it.
Right, but they're losing their retirement, so they're not selling.
Two years ago, there were eighty-six properties on forty-site for sale and whatnot. Last spring, there wasn't any, but they're up now to fifteen or eighteen now. So you can see that the trend is already starting going back. So I think this availability of house, of property is going to increase, whether or not you get sales for it.
But, but that's.
What do you think, Mary, you're, you know, in that business?
Mary's got some big, big price places in Walton Woods right now. And she just, they just sold one, but I can guarantee you that the person that sold that place did not make back what they had in it.
She bought it original in the subdivision that's already sold?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Do you think they bought it on speculation or they buy it to develop?
Oh, I don't think they even looked at it.
Just bought it? Yeah.
Yeah, but. Society, yeah.
Okay, we gotta.
Yes.
What, what's this number gonna be? How bad do you want me to pay, to give Julie a twelve-pack of beer?
You're talking about my next year's projections?
Next year's projection is two fifty.
Well, no, she's got it at two twenty-five, man.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I'm saying that she's not gonna get hit twelve-pack of beer unless I get my two fifty on the budget. I would rather, I would rather find the, the failure, if that turns out to be fifteen thousand or less, I'd rather find it fifteen thousand somewhere than to assess fifteen thousand in taxation that we didn't need. That's my problem.
Yeah, I, 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 I fully understand and remember from last year the importance of having these revenue numbers because of that. I, I'm struggling. I, 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 I think the two twenty-five is low. I think the five-year average is too high.
Two forty.
I, I thought, you know, that's why I kept asking about the two fifty-seven, so.
If we go two, if we go two forty, then it's a six-pack, it's not a twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess it's two forty's the number.
Yeah. You know, 'cause I can always kind of make it up somewhere else.
And we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't chastise you for not making it.
I know, 'cause, well, if I can't, if they're not selling.
That's right.
I know. I mean, there are some things we can control, but, so, that's all right.
Expenses.
All right.
Now, have you had an increase in your fees to?
Um, no, no. No, we don't, we don't control that, okay?
Right, but I was wondering, because the, your actuals don't support five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess that act, this number that says June might not have been through the end of June. I don't know that, but I'm gonna guess because I'm pretty sure that my transfer tax wasn't, so.
Monica, Trio does this automatically, right? In other words, whatever day you go in, they just figure out how many days, times, right? So I mean, it depends on when they did it, it depends on, yeah. You're, you're comfortable with the five?
I am, I can, I can tell you right now that, um, right now.
You don't make it, you give me my six-pack back.
Oh, I'm gonna make it. The post office isn't doing passports right now. And Monica, are we doing passports? Pissed out. We are doing passports, like a lot a day, and it's been, this is the third week. So, yeah, we're gonna make the fees.
So if you do two fifty.
Mm-hmm.
What do you make, get him?
Oh, am I getting him?
Yes.
I'll take that. I just want my beer. So anyway, yeah, we'll make the fees. Do you wanna talk about expenses?
I was, quite frankly, I was looking at that and I'm not sure there's a lot to talk about there. Anybody else? I mean, Julie, I don't mean to preempt you, but.
Yeah, I know, I, I, my expenses, I do run pretty, pretty good.
Where, where are you going, Julie?
I, um, in contemplating a trip to Florida, no, to Florida, to look at a system.
Well, I would do, sure, I don't see anything. So.
Good.
All right.
Good. Okay, I'll try to make it as much money as possible. Okay. Thank you.
Come again.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You.
That was fourteen minutes, by the way.
Oh, Monica, if Billy hadn't tried to entice me with beer, I swear to God, it would have been a five. It would be even less at the bat committee.
Is that affected by the?
Are we, are we all set?
We're all set.
Okay, I'm gonna move to adjourn.
Second motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Cornell, are you still on?
Still here.
Are you go, are you going to work tomorrow?